Public and you're welcome to join us in person or by watching from the council's agenda page, Zoom, Facebook, YouTube, or SLCTV. We hope you'll continue to join us in whichever manner you feel most comfortable. This is a work session meeting during which there's no public comment. Please join us tonight during our 7:00 PM formal meeting to share your comments. We of course welcome your feedback anytime by mail to PO Box 145476, Salt Lake City, Utah, 841145476, by email at council comments at slc gov dot com, or via our 24 hour phone comment line, 801-535-7654. Comments we receive on agenda topics are shared with council members and posted to our website at slc council dot com. We'll now begin our work session. The first agenda item is informational updates from the administration. I see Ashley Cleveland is here. Andrew, oh, I see Andrew over there. Come on up.
Good afternoon, council. So good to see you so soon and happy day after Martin Luther King Jr. Day. So fun volunteering with you yesterday. Our highlights this go around will mostly focus on ongoing civic engagement opportunities. As always, everyone online, please do, tuning in online, please do figure, please do visit the slc.gov/feedback/website. It's regularly updated with highlighted ways to engage with the city. One thing I would really like to bring up from the community outreach team's perspective is there are not a lot of city, there are not a lot of in-person civic engagement opportunities happening until spring ramps back up. But that doesn't mean that there still aren't a lot of opportunities to provide feedback and comment while we get ready for the spring season. So I spent some time going through the civic engagement website and I wanted to highlight all of the opportunities that are available and the different ways you can engage with them. So the reimagined Donner Trail Park, they have a full webpage and engagement report. Their engagement closed over the fall, so if anyone wants to know how well it did and who we were able to talk to, please feel free to dig into the engagement report and reach out to our civic engagement team with more questions. We also have the reimagined Liberty Park Playground. They have a full webpage, upcoming event updates for you to sign up for and a full engagement report as well. The Connect SLC Citywide Transportation Plan has a full webpage, a draft plan that is complete and ready for all citizens review, and a comment form that's available in English and Spanish, which I think is really great. We have our livable streets survey. It's fully functioning and available, so please give us your feedback. We also have our accessibility in all of our parks being put on by our ADA coordinator from the mayor's office. That survey is still ongoing and open. And then we also have the Allen Parks Concept Survey where we are welcome to review all the concepts that the community has decided upon. Those are still open. Furthermore, we have the Making the Emerald Ribbon. There is a full story map, which is really engaging, where you can actually upload your own story on their sharing platform. And of course, the Fleet Block Art Healing Comet Form is still available with a full webpage that consists of all the history regarding Fleet Block, the most recent council decision, and a Comet Farm form available on the art healing process. So we would love to hear from you on that. Capitol Hill has a traffic calming webpage available. That should be really interesting considering that construction should be starting and engagement closed in October for that. And then we also have our landscaping and buffers chapters amendment and a full webpage is available there. So if you just want more information on even what landscaping and buffers are, how do we define changing that amendment? Please do visit it. And then one of my favorites is the Fighting the Freight Train Crisis. There is a webpage and story sharing forum in English and Spanish, and I'm pretty sure who he would love to invite people to provide some stories there. Now, from the mayor's office, as we get ready for Black History Month and also a series-
Sorry, can't get my microphone to work. There it goes, my headphones, I mean. Maybe it went?
Who's that? Okay. So to kick off our series that we call the Annual Community Meeting Series, in February next year, I mean, this year, we will start with our Black History Month Engagement. So we have a series called the Annual Community Meeting Series. What are they? They're general community meetings occurring around cultural heritage, history, months or days. They are extremely similar to our existing community council quarterly meetings where we invite our community council chairs and co-chairs to meet with the mayor's office and staff. We uphold a community-created theme with our collaborators. We send out a survey to guide the overall discussion with community members. We include city staff from various divisions. And we can include a proclamation reading, although it is not required because we want to make sure we're more accessible and can have those meetings available in the evening. And council is always welcome to join us as usual. These meetings hopefully result in better connection in various ways. As pictured here, last year, we had the Black and African American Leader Service. It was hosted at Calvary Baptist Church. And this year, the title will be the Black Diaspora Annual Community Meeting with Community Outreach. The mayor's office community outreach team has hosted this inclusion-focused event to build the relationship with city officials and staff. It is one of eight annual connections to minoritized communities. The goal is to have tough conversations and connect communities, their leaders, business owners, residents, artists, and activists to staff to fill any gaps when in service when it's possible. A lot of the goals that we really try to connect community members to is of course our weekly community outreach newsletter. Please visit our website and sign up for it. We also have community office hours that are regularly updated there. And we will have a new way to be doing promotion a month prior to those. So you guys should be getting updates about those more regularly. And then of course, we have 29 boards and commissions representing over 280 resident consultants and partners citywide. And so we usually try and let the community know about openings there so that they can be, they can feel included to apply. As a community outreach team, we recognize that not all of our community councils officially recognize organizations and board commissions reflect all of our city. And as mayor's office staff, we want to play a positive role in getting people excited about working with this administration. We need minoritized community groups and leaders of those groups to share civic opportunities that shape their neighborhoods so that we can better serve. Engagement isn't about agreement, but it's rather about involvement. And there are some pictures with some of the community members that we have hosted this meeting series with over the past year. Thank you.
Hello, council members. Andrew Johnston from the mayor's office as well. This slide is up again, high utilization of the existing homeless resource centers and the winter overflow beds. The Code Blue beds are still being used. We've had a number of Code Blue nights last week, another one tonight. After tonight, we anticipate that the weather will be a little more mild than it has been. So we may not have more opportunities in the next week necessarily. The encampment and impact mitigation work is still sparse, I'll say that. The reason is the Code Blue situation and the storms coming through. However, there is still cleaning going on and we can do some work on a case-by-case basis. So most likely that may look like an area of more sensitivity around a school, a daycare, those kind of things. If there's a camp that's causing disruption there, we may have to do some action. But we're trying to avoid this as much as we can, just for your knowledge. And the next resource, their last resource fair went really well at the Miller Resource Center. And they're planning another one for February 9th. Don't know the location of that yet. We'll get that to you as soon as possible. Next slide. The updates here in Sandy, the Medically Vulnerable Persons Program is opening next week. They got their certificate of occupancy and their license. They'll be ramping up on a daily basis as it go forward. I don't anticipate them being to 165 very shortly. They're still doing some renovations as it go along, but they'll be up over 100, I think, pretty quickly, which is a good sign for all of us. Point in time count is on the 25th, 26th, and 27th. We still need volunteers for the county. That means anybody, no experience necessary, just a willingness to get up fairly early, at least one morning and go out and help. So get online at the Salt Lake Valley Coalition and Homelessness website. You can see that in yellow on the left and they'll have a link right there. You can sign right up for it. Similar thing with Code Blue shelters. We still need volunteers for these other locations, not tonight particularly. So the Second and Second Coalition and the Volley Behavioral Health Location, both need volunteers. And they will be open tonight again. Like I said, volunteers are needed. They can sign up again at the Salt Lake Valley Coalition and Homelessness website. There's a link right there. It's very simple, no experience necessary, just a willingness to try and they'll train and help you along. So don't be too scared about these opportunities. The last slide is just a follow-up from last week. There were a number of questions that were emailed, responses were emailed to the council office. And if there are questions, we can do that here, or if not, we can move on. It's not an issue.
Thank you, Andrew. Council members, any questions, concerns? All right, you guys got off easy today. Thank you. All right, next up, we will hear about an ordinance to rezone at 2260, 2270, and 2290 East, 1300 South. We've got Brian Fulmer from the Council Policy Analyst coming up with the Dream Team from Planning, Chrissy Gilmore and Kelsey Lindquist. Oh, you're just sending, you're just sending Kelsey by yourself? Is that what I'm hearing? Oh, your name was not in here. I was totally unprepared for this. All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a proposal amending the zoning properties you referenced in Council District Six from their current R1 7,000 or single-family residential zoning to CB or community business. No development plans have been submitted at this point, but it is anticipated the properties will be developed along with adjoining property to the south for multifamily or mixed use. The petitioner is planning to join us online and would appreciate an opportunity to address the council. Now I'll turn it over to Eric.
Okay, next slide. So this gives you an idea of the area here just above, just east of Foothill Drive and 13th South. And it's, so it's those three residential properties shown there. The properties are currently used as single-family homes, but they're rentals. And the petitioner owns the properties immediately to the south and would like to eventually combine those and have one development where the parking lot sits now and the homes are. Next slide. So this also gives you an idea of the context and the surrounding zones with open space where the cemetery is to the east and then the R1 12,000 neighborhood to the north and surrounding CB zone where the commercial properties are. And there's a picture of those three homes. Next slide. And again, that's just to give you a little bit of context on the properties in the surrounding area. Next slide. So in looking at this, planning staff's recommending approval for the rezone. And just kind of an idea of what would change. Of course, the permitted uses going from the single family, this would allow for medium-density mixture use and residential properties. But the CB is a zone that's designed to be compatible with a transitional zone from single-family residential to commercial. So we felt that that was appropriate. The height doesn't change much, just going to 30 feet from the 28. And there are reduced setbacks, but they're appropriate for commercial scale development. And it does include certain provisions. There's one, there's more design standards in that that are, that the property would be subject to ensuring a good transition to the neighborhood. But also if any building is over 7,500 square feet, then it would need to go to the design review and would be subject to additional standards that would be reviewed by the Planning Commission. Next slide. And we felt it was appropriate, given the various master plans, Plan Salt Lake and the East Bench Master Plan, that it would help accomplish various initiatives that are listed there, but also providing for additional housing that's maybe not as available on the east side and in this area. But that it was an appropriate scale in transitioning from the single-family to the existing commercial. And next slide. That's it, yeah. So if you have any questions or again, the applicant has joined us online, I believe, and should be able to go over some things.
Thank you, council. Any questions for staff?
Yes, Madam Chair. First question on the, these three single-family zones, there's zero setback for the commercial CB on that. But is it required to have a front-facing access off of 13th South? Whether walking in, they don't necessarily have to have a driveway, but maybe walking into a store?
Yeah, yeah. So there would be entrance requirements facing the public street?
Both public streets, 13th and 23rd?
Correct.
Okay. The next question on just the, the rest of the area CB is the rest of the, I'm gonna say triangle up to the hotels. Is that all owned by the same property owner?
No, not, not all of it is. The developer, I believe, controls the, just the commercial property. I don't know that they have the hotel. I think they just have where the restaurant slash office is that's vacant currently.
Okay. That one. And then when the planning commission looked at this, what was the discussions on? We recently passed the Affordable Housing Initiative, which basically gave us, or developer and then neighborhood the opportunity to take a single-family home up to a fourplex with the incentive of affordable housing. Was that ever discussed at the planning commission or was that ever discussed with the developer?
That wasn't, just, one, it wasn't passed by then when this was submitted.
Okay.
I'm sure they could possibly speak more to that. That's not something we've entirely examined. We can, we can certainly look into that and give them more of an idea of what would now be available, but we haven't.
Okay, because I'm, I'm open and I very, I would love to see community development on this side of the Foothill because there's really very little over there. And it'd be nice to have a, an additional restaurant. I used to walk to that, there used to be a Red Robin there when Sarah was gone and I had to fend for myself. I would go down there for a burger and a beer. It was an easy walk for me and maybe, yes. And it was nice to have. And I love to have another restaurant there or a coffee shop or a small local, local community stores because that's, that's what we're asking for, these community nodes. But I also understand the, that these are three single-family homes that we just said, hey, we can also develop with affordable housing tacked onto it without anything, you know, at the benefit of the community and the neighborhood. So I'm just looking at this going, is there a need to change this zoning to CB when we can have affordable housing on these three parcels? And, and that's up to the rest of the property owner. But he has an incentive to give us affordable housing. Because right now, is there, was there any discussion about affordable housing on changing this rezone with the property owner?
Again, so that's something, you know, we're, we kind of go with the petition we've been, or the requests that were given. And so, you know, we talked about what's available in the zone, but we didn't have the affordable housing in place. So we can certainly educate them on that and help them understand it now that it's available. My understanding is, again, they're interested in taking over like that parking lot area and making something that would, you know, have additional units and things like that. But that hasn't necessarily been decided upon, is my understanding. Maybe the applicant can fill us in on that more. But, you know, we just kind of look at, is the, is the request appropriate?
Right.
For, you know, what the area?
Right. I mean, I love, I want to get rid of the parking lot. I mean, to me, I hate parking lots like that. I mean, that's just black asphalt. It's not great. I love to have the trees and, and the community know they're without a big parking lot. So, but I'm just looking at these two different CB zones. We have three parcels and I'd like to make sure that we have affordable housing. And that's why we did the Affordable Housing Initiative and how that plays with this, this current development and their ideas.
Council, any other questions for staff? Because it sounds like we're at a pretty good moment to give the developer, the owner, a chance to speak. All right, Mr. Morris, thank you for joining us. Typically, we give landowners and petitioners five minutes to explain anything. You do not have to take that time. But yeah, we look forward to hearing from you. The floor is yours.
Yeah, can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Sorry for not being there at conflicting meetings, but to zoom in like this, but I appreciate the time. I represent Jim Duffin, who's, who's also on. He owns these three homes, the parking lot to the south and what used to be the Red Robin. And I believe Marie Callender's before that is, was corrected last time. Not the gas station and then not the, not the hotel. The concept from, from our end, as Eric described, is to take these three, merge them into effectively a broader development with the parking lot to the south and retain the restaurant that's there. I think Jim's already in the process of, of putting a new tenant in the restaurant that's on Foothill. So, so that would remain kind of a retail option there. And then, you know, most likely what we've considered is an apartment complex up to the east that would, that would take over the bulk of the parking lot and the bulk of the kind of eastern portion of these homes. And then you would have, you know, auto access from Foothill and from, from 13th South. You know, the scale of, of that apartment will be pretty similar to that, you know, hankering inn that's, it's just to the south. It's based on height requirements. You would probably end up with kind of 50 to 60 apartments in that area is kind of what we've ballparked. But we've just looked at it loosely from there. You know, the, as mentioned, the, the homes in their current location with the zoning that's around them, they're, they're a bit of an odd fit and an anachronism. There's, there's a Wendy's drive-through immediately to the west of here that's effectively 10 feet from the house that's on the west. You know, they all back up to that 120 stall parking lot to the south. So that's the adjacent use there. And then the cemetery is to the east and all the homes that are across 13th are generally oriented away from this facade. So we're looking at the garages across the street. So there's, there's not a lot of engagement with a kind of residential portion of the neighborhood that's around there. You know, we view that, that node as a good opportunity to deliver some kind of transitional housing that isn't broadly available in this area. You know, it's, it's apartments that kind of a medium scale that would be another option from what's largely kind of single-family homes up in this area as, as another potential just housing option up there. You know, to, to address the comment that was made, we, we haven't really looked at this as a kind of fourplex approach for, for those three parcels. We've just, we've just thought of it as it, rolling these into the, the parking lot to the south makes for the ability to make kind of a more functional overall development for the whole thing. If, if, if these aren't included in that parking lot, it becomes a little more tricky to redevelop that piece. Not that it wouldn't be possible, but it just, it makes it a little bit more challenging just on the footprint and efficiency standpoint. So, you know, that's the approach we've had. We think it's, you know, consistent with the, the master plans of the area, you know, the East Bench Master Plan and the other kind of relevant plans here, like to focus kind of development along Foothill. They want to focus along, you know, existing retail corridors where we'd be able to retain the retail and kind of deliver more residents to service the retailers to the west right there. So for a lot of reasons, you know, we think it's a great location with great access to kind of main thoroughfares and, and, you know, making this zoning consistent with the rest of that block makes a lot of sense from, from our perspective. So I'm, I don't, I don't need to take a ton of time. I'm happy to answer any questions or, or, you know, address any concerns that, that any of the council members have.
Thank you so much. Council members, questions, comments? Yes, Councilmember Mono.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering if the, if Tyler, you can confirm which parcels would be in a potential redevelopment? And I guess maybe more specifically which ones you or the client, the landowner that you represent own. It's the three houses plus the entirety of the parking lot and the, the old Red Robin building? Or is it not the Red Robin building, just part of the parking lot?
Yeah, also the, the Red Robin, the parking, and then these three parcels. So the, the intent would be for the Red Robin to say, we would try to maintain, I think, you know, 30 to 40 surface stalls as part of the circulation that would kind of service that restaurant and allow it to kind of be there and function properly and then have an apartment building tucked to the east of that.
Okay. And then the, the gas station Wendy's is, is separate as well as the hotel? Those are owned by separate people?
Yeah, those would not be, those would not be a part of any redevelopment there.
All right, great. And then, Madam Chair, if it's okay, the, to staff, does CB zone have any maximum lot sizes or maximum? I, in my experience, CBs, I, I see typically more in like smaller parcels as zone CB. This one seems like it would be a pretty large parcel for, it sounds like they're going to keep the, the restaurant separate. But if they were to incorporate the restaurant and the full parking lot and the three houses, that to me feels like a pretty big, like acreage-wise parcel for a CB. Is that, am I thinking of that correctly or?
I don't have that in front of me unless one of my fellow planners has that. I do know, again, the footprint of an individual building is limited or at least once it goes over 7,500, it's got to go to design review, but I don't have that right in front of me.
That makes sense.
This parcel is actually not unusual for the CB zone. Most of our grocery stores are actually located in the CB. Gives you an idea of what's out there in that zone.
Okay.
Anyone else? Councilmember Deegan?
Yes, thank you very much. Thanks for that. And I, I appreciate the discussion. I appreciate the idea of the community and the, and the additional apartments and stuff. But it seems like those are great benefits for the developer. But, you know, we're, the city is, has an initiative for affordable housing on these three properties. And I don't see any benefit from the city standpoint of us saying, okay, we're going to allow you to rezone these three properties at a, at a benefit to yourself, but not so much of a benefit to the, the community or the, the city in general. Is there thoughts on affordable housing? I mean, that's why we did the Affordable Housing Initiative was to increase our affordable housing and allow some mixed-use housing and, and maybe some smaller residents in different areas. But I don't see there any, any notion on affordability on your, on your mixed income and the, and the sizes of your units. Are they studio one bedrooms? I know this is more into, into the development side of house and not so much of the land use. But that's all takes place in our thought process when we're going to say, hey, we're going to rezone this. Yeah, I love to rezone this, but you know, I, to me, the, the community could say, I want to see green space. And I see a nice three lots of green space here instead of a, a big apartment complex with very little green space and, and not much, much for us, but a lot for you, the developer.
No, yeah, I appreciate that. Again, for, for the kind of fourplex option, it is, it's not something we've gone down the path of a lot, honestly, for, from, from a development standpoint, with three existing houses there that, you know, you could, that are existing rentals right now. Financially, it's unlikely that it'll make sense to convert those to fourplexes with a portion of that being affordable. It's just the, the construction cost and the incremental rent is unlikely to work itself out based on other lots that we've looked at. I can't say that for certain here and I haven't spent a lot of time on, on the fourplex initiative. But it's, they would likely, more likely stay the, the single-family homes than they would convert to kind of fourplexes with affordable housing. But to your point, that's not necessarily a bad outcome for some of the neighbors. I think they would probably prefer to see these stay, single-family homes. From, from, from our perspective, I mean, I think the, the piece for us, that, that having these three homes rezone is it allows a more thoughtful kind of redevelopment of the parking lot to the south, which I think would, would benefit kind of broadly in the community there to get rid of just the, the kind of expanse of asphalt that's there. Again, there's obviously the benefits to the owner and the developer as well for the opportunity to do that. But it's in a, to maintain the restaurant where it is, have the parking that's available and have some sort of redevelopment. There's not enough space without these three homes to do all three. I think we would certainly be, be open to kind of leveraging any of the, the affordable housing tools to include those as, as options of any kind of- to include those as options of any kind of future redevelopment here. We've had not a ton of luck with that in the past, making it kind of feasible from our end. And we've kind of explored, you know, trying to deliver affordable units by working with the unit mix and trying to make them, you know, the gross dollars affordable. But I think that's semantics versus kind of a big A affordable option. But, you know, I'm supportive of exploring that and trying to figure out a way to make it work here. And, you know, as some portion of the delivery, but as configured, it's, you know, the expectation that it would be kind of a market rent product.
Yeah, I appreciate it because, I mean, one of our biggest tenants, as you say, not one of our biggest, some of our biggest tenants is affordable housing in general, but also affordable family housing. And that would be three bedrooms, two to three bedroom units also. And, you know, when we're so hard pressed to find affordable units, not just in my district, but in other districts for families, it would be nice to see those being part of the proposal. If, especially for to eliminate three, I would say, affordable houses on a, in a nice location, in a nice area to add to that mix of affordability in the design here.
Councilmember Dugan, you are thrilling my soul that you're offering your district to be the first one to innovate our affordable housing incentives. Like thrilling me. Councilmembers, any other questions, comments, concerns? We, yes, sir.
I'll just say really quickly that Tyler, if you would, I'd be interested in knowing whether you, your team would be, would be amenable to, even if it's not developing under the Affordable Housing Incentives Initiative Ordinance, entering into a development agreement that would, that would agree to put some affordable housing on the property if it was rezoned to CB. That's a little different than what Councilmember Dugan's saying. And so, but I'd be interested in knowing if that would be something you'd be amenable to is, is saying if we can, if we do approve the zoning, you will deliver certain number of units or percentage of units. I don't know what that would look like, but to echo what Councilman Dugan said, affordable housing is something that's really big in our city, families as well, but also affordable housing in high opportunity areas, which I believe this qualifies as. So I'm getting affordable housing in that area would be a really big win for the community, I think. Even if it's a small percentage of affordable housing units and having, you know, the majority of them still be market rate. I think even a little bit of affordable housing up there to me would feel like a win. Not saying that's 100% required for me to consider it, but that I'd be interested in what your team would be willing to offer.
I mean, I think you know what our preference would be, right? And to not have any additional limitations on it. I, I, I would have to speak with Jim and the owner to discuss his kind of openness to that type of thing. My, my only concern, and again, I know that this is not something that you need to consider this as from a different perspective than we do. But there's, you know, there's a percentage of affordable housing that you hit at some point where then it's just not a feasible product or project, right? Where it becomes a limitation to be able to build at all. And I don't, I can't speak intelligently about what that number is without spending time to look into it. I, my response to you would be like, I'm happy to look into it and have that discussion for sure. But I couldn't commit to anything without spending more time on it.
I understand that your, your preference would be no restriction on that or no agreement to that at all. But the other, the option would be then, I mean, this is a rezone, so it's totally discretionary. If, if the answer were no, but for some affordability, what would be that level, I think, is the question? And I'm not saying that is the situation, but I consider.
I think that's, that's the way I received the comment is what is, what is the number that could be tolerable? That would help kind of make this, make this feel good for everybody. And if it was a no, but, you know, we can, we can review it under that, from that perspective and think about it. But yeah, I don't have enough information just off the top of my head to give you an answer one way or the other. But I, I appreciate your position. I think I understand where you're coming from. We can spend some time on it.
Madam Chair, I changed my mind.
Yes, Councilmember, please.
I, I mean, I, you know, I, I'm interested on the thought, you know, brought up here as far as including some affordability to this project. And I, I think that, you know, simple math will tell you that there is some interest here on getting someplace there. And, you know, that, you know, we, you, you're going to need some, the support of the council members here to approve this. And there is an interest here on finding some affordability, some level of affordability on this project. And I will be interested in looking into that for me to support the general project at this moment. So just putting it out there. I think that, you know, you guys are creative enough and can figure something out. And I, and I'm not looking for a lot. I'm also not looking for necessarily the, to apply the new ordinances and, you know, the new tools that we have. But if you wish to explore the new tools that we, we have out there as a city, would love to see some of that be an exercise. And, you know, on the east side of the city, I would love to see some affordability there. But, but yeah, I just wanted to put it on the record that I'm interested in seeing some creativity on that aspect.
Yeah, I noted and will think about it. I would put out there one more wrinkle, and this is just for additional color, is, you know, the, I think generally the, this is being requested without a kind of development plan for the apartment. And I say that in the thing that it's possible that, that Jim may decide to go a different direction too. Like he may, if this is approved or not, he may end up leaving these homes. He may end up deciding that just kind of a full commercial use makes more sense here. So I would want to be careful as we go down that path that it doesn't bind him in some way to, to a plan. Aside from the affordable housing that, all right, this is committed to apartments. He's still, I think he's still considering the options here as we go down this path. It's just the CB zone gives him more potential options in terms of what can be done then, right?
Okay, thank you. Am I good? All right, guys, this is my first meeting. I'm going to keep us on schedule. We're getting behind already. All right, thank you, everyone. We will move on then to the next piece of business, which is an ordinance regarding the Avenue's Restricted Covenant. Brian Fulmer gets to keep his seat. And then Eric, now Chrissy and, guys, the names today. Now I get to hang out with Chrissy and Kelsey. So, all right, welcome, friends.
Thank you. This is a proposal to remove a restrictive covenant from 18 properties located primarily between B Street and D Street and between Ninth Avenue and Eleventh Avenue in City Council District Three. The covenant ensured that these properties would be limited to single and two family or other uses that conform to the R2 zoning that was in effect back when the covenants were established in 1981. And now I'll turn it over to Chrissy.
Yeah, thank you. So it did have some slides, but we probably don't need them because it's just really the map. So this request came about from last spring. I was reviewing a lot consolidation and we discovered that there was restrictive covenant on the property that would prohibit the property owner from constructing an ADU. And then after looking into it there, we discovered that it was also on 17 other properties. And after internal discussions, the Planning Division decided to move forward and see if the City Council might be interested in removing that covenant from those properties. So this came about in 1981 with the closure of Eighth Avenue between C and D Streets. And from our understanding, unfortunately, the records aren't great, but the Recorder's Office was able to help me find some documentation. But my understanding is that the Greater Avenue's Community Council agreed to not oppose that restriction if these properties underwent that restrictive covenant. And after talking to the Greater Avenue's Community Council, it appears that those 18 properties used to be used as homes for traveling doctors or for families of sick patients. And since that time, those homes have now been sold and they are no longer owned by LDS Hospital. And so we can go to the next slide. There we go. Since they're no longer owned by LDS Hospital and since the eighties, you know, things have changed. ADUs are now a thing. It might be appropriate to remove that covenant at this time. So you can see on that map that they're primarily surrounding the hospital. There is one down in the corner that's kind of hard to see. And then if you go to the next slide, that covenant was primarily has to do with the use. It says that those properties should maintain an R2 use that was in effect of that time. And so the biggest impact from this removal would be that those properties would now be able to follow the SR1A zone that they're currently zoned as. And so they would now be allowed to have an accessory dwelling unit, which I think is what most people are interested in. And then you can see the other uses like a congregate care facility, a community garden, a daycare center. And I wanted to reiterate that just because those uses would be permitted or conditional by removing the covenant, it doesn't mean that they're automatically guaranteed to have that use. They still must meet all the zoning requirements for that use. And that was very short and sweet, but that's all I had and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmembers, questions for staff? Councilmember Dugan?
Thank you for the clarity because I was looking at these houses going, how is it just a scattergram? But it was because they were owned by the LDS Hospital for each use. They didn't want to have the ADU. So if the rest of them don't have a covenant on them, the rest of the houses, it's just these 18 units.
Yep.
Okay.
And I think the concern from the Community Council at the time was that they, the hospital might sell them for some commercial use and they wanted to prevent that from happening.
Okay.
Anyone else? Questions? We're good? All right, thank you. Always good to see you, friends. All right, we will move on to our next order of business. An ordinance regarding the Community Benefit Tenant Displacement Amendments. We're going to switch Brian out for Allison Roland from Council Office. Nick Norris, Chrissy and Kelsey are already in place. They get to keep their seats. Is Allison joining us virtually? All right, one moment, friends. We're going to give Allison a second to scoot on over here. They are not used to us being ahead of schedule. Everyone is prepared for us to be behind. But you all were so good on that last presentation. You recouped time for us. Sorry, we gave you a false impression that you had time to go get a drink, Allison. That's right, no sustaining life functions.
Well, I apologize for making everybody wait. This is the Community Benefit Tenant Displacement Amendments. And this is a series of ordinance changes. And in addition to city code that planning has suggested as part of a, as part of the follow-up to the Thriving in Place Plan that the council approved last fall, I'm going to leave it at that because otherwise I would be freelancing and that's not a good idea. So I will pass it to the planners.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. So as Allison mentioned, this is a Community Benefit Displacement Amendments. It impacts Title 19, well, a new Title 19, 21A50, and then Title 18. And then we can go to the next slide and actually one more past that. So as Allison mentioned, this is, this came about from Thriving in Place, which was started in 2021 and went through new rounds of public outreach. And through that process, the, it was found that, and I know you were all aware well of it, but displacement is significantly getting worse in Salt Lake City. There are no more affordable neighborhoods and just that there's not enough housing units overall. And so out of thriving in place, you can go to the next slide. There were four policy goals for the Planning Division to address. And the first one was establish a community benefit policy, create a tenant relocation assistance program, require replacement housing units and require data on housing. And so that's how we got here today. And that's what we will be proposing to you today is how to address those policy goals. Next slide, and then one more past that. So I first want to start with that, how these amendments apply and what they apply to. These amendments apply to general plan amendments. So if an applicant is amending the Plan Salt Lake or any neighborhood plans and then any zoning or text, so any zoning amendments, a text amendment, a map amendment. So the first part of this is Title 19. And Title 19 is a new chapter of our city code that is, was created to meet state law, to meet levma. This defines what the general plan is. So like I mentioned, the general plan is considered Plan Salt Lake and then any elemental plans that have a land use component. So our neighborhood plans, the transportation master plan, for example. Title 19 also goes over criteria for when a plan must be amended. Also what that, what the plans must include to meet city, city requirements and state law. And then it goes over the petition process for both private property owners and city initiated comprehensive updates. Next slide, please. And then Title 19 also includes what? And I'll go over each of these in detail in a moment, but the Community Benefit Policy required assistance for relocation assistance for displaced tenants and then required replacement dwellings if a proposal will result in the demolition of a dwelling. And then inclusion of demographic data and displacement consideration. So basically new standards for consideration of review when you are reviewing a zoning or general plan amendment. The next slide. And then this next part of this is Chapter 21A50, which is our zoning amendments chapter. And so anytime a property owner is amending the zoning map, whether the property, whether the proposal meets the general plan or not, just a zoning amendment, they would also be subject to these requirements with the same thing that was in Title 19, the Community Benefit Policy and so forth. And we've attempted to keep the language very consistent between both chapters because sometimes a property owner might be subject to one or the other or both. And so they're consistent for that reason. Next slide. And then the third part of this is Title 18, which will also be amended. So a major goal through this process that was identified in Thriving in Place was to remove the Housing Loss Mitigation Ordinance, which has been shown to be largely ineffective. And so through this process, the Housing Loss Mitigation Ordinance will be deleted and replaced with these amendments entitled 19 and Title 21A50. And then the demolition ordinance will also be amended just to ensure consistency. Like it will now have new data collection requirements, for example. Okay, next slide. Okay, so just to get into the details of each one of these major policy considerations. So the first one is a community benefit policy. So when a property owner is applying to amend the general plan or a zoning text, zoning map or text amendments, they will now be required to propose what's called a community benefit. And they must select an item from this list. So housing, which includes the provision of affordable housing or family sized housing, dedication of publicly accessible open spaces, support for local businesses and the Planning Commission added in and/or charitable organizations. Preservation of critical lands, so this includes like wetland habitat and so forth. Historic building preservation and expansion of public infrastructure beyond, beyond what is already required. And then along with that, the ordinance also has factors to consider these amendments. So are they proportional to the increase in development? If there is a really great increase in development potential, then the community benefit proposed should also be very great. And another example is like if they're proposing to do public accessible open space, how does that relate to the size of the project and the overall square footage of the, of the lot? And then finally, on the community benefit policy is that this would be secured through a development agreement with the City Council. And ultimately, this is up to the discretion of the council. They could choose to waive the community benefit, modify it or require something different. Next slide. And then tenant relocation. So if a property has a potential to displace people, and this only applies to people, not commercial businesses. So if it, if it has the potential to displace people, the applicant would be subject to covering moving expenses up to $1,500. Fee assistance, so like the deposit or any other fees associated with the application. Rental payment assistance to cover the difference between the existing rent and the new rent, which would not exceed $7,200. And then if the property owner also has the option to relocate the property they already own. And in that case, they want to be subject to the fee assistance because that would already be covered. And there was some confusion on this item. So this is not intended to be a city run process. This is intended to be fully on the applicant, the property owner and their tenants. And so the city wouldn't have a fund. These months, this would just be purely on the, their side. And they would just need to provide proof that they met this obligation. And it could also be included in the development agreement that this obligation is met. The next slide. And then housing replacement. So if a property is likely to demolish existing housing, the petitioner may be required to either replace the dwelling units at the same size and same rental rate. Or they would be required to replace the dwelling units at the same size and same rental rate or limit. Or they would be required to replace the dwelling units at the same size and same rental rate, or limit, or limit the rental rate. Sorry, I messed up the text on this slide. But basically, they have to replace those units. And they could either choose between doing a no more than three percent annual increase on those units over twenty years. Or they could do a payment to the city, which would be the existing unit rent times by the months it costs, it takes to replace that unit, and that equals a payment. So I gave an example in the staff report of they demolished the unit and it takes them thirty-six months to get their certificate of occupancy, and the unit rent was a thousand dollars, the payment would be thirty-six thousand dollars. And that would also be secured at the end through a development agreement. And next slide. And then standards for amendments. So there are new consideration standards, and really, they're just expanded consideration standards for the planning staff, planning commission and city council to review when reviewing a zoning amendment or text amendment. And these assess whether the community benefit is appropriate, the potential to displace people and businesses. It also looks into expanded consideration regarding the impact to city services. And then proximity to amenities, and this includes fresh food. And the next slide. And then data collection. So thriving in place called for collecting more data so that we can analyze displacement that's happening. So applicants would now be subject to including information on the housing unit rent and sizes in their application. They would need to include the number of bedrooms and the current rent going back thirty-six months with their applications now. And then next slide. So just to cover public engagement, we produced a story map, an online story map that went through each one of these and went into quite a bit of detail on the amendments. There were three public open houses that were, I think, fairly well-attended. And then we also held development community roundtable meetings with representatives from the development community. And as noted in the, the staff report and transmittal, the development community, their biggest concern was that three percent rental rate restriction over twenty years and just that it was too hard for their bottom line and their performa to understand and predict, and that they would have preferred some type of fee or payment to the city. And that's where that change in the ordinance came about. And that was all I have, so I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Chrissy. Before I open it up to council, can I get a clarification as to whether this applies when there's a zoning map amendment or a master planned amendment?
It applies to both. So either one.
Someone is just asking for a change in zoning, we would be able to. Thank you. That was an important clarification. I've got a bunch of things. Let me start with Puyi, and then we'll go to Lopez Travis.
Just a quick question. You know, it seems like you mentioned that we, the city won't be running the program itself. Like it will be a requirement by the, the, those managing those properties or, you know, trying to change the zoning or the project or whatnot. But how, how are we going to enforce this? And, you know, and how much cost-wise is going to, you know, how much infrastructure do we need? You know, this, in general, I mean, I, I'm looking forward to these changes or, you know, to, to add some of these tools to, to our neighbors. But I am worried about how do we ensure that they're doing what they say they're doing? If that makes sense. And, and how do we check that, you know, reasonable, you know, reasonable notices given? And all of these things are, are, and, you know, some people don't have that relationship with the, with, with the landowner. And, you know, some, some tenants don't. And I, I'm worried that there's going to be some, we're going to have something on the books, and we're now going to make sure that it works. And that is my, my main concern at the moment.
Yeah, and that's understandable. So as far as the first part of your question about staff resources and managing that, I think that because of that's run on the applicant side, Nick could correct me. I don't think we need extra staff for this part of it. It will require quite a bit more analysis from planning's perspective and looking at the community benefit policy and public outreach and meetings. However, I do think you, we could potentially see less applications, which will make up for that gap in the amount of time that staffs reviewing these. As far as making sure that the applicant and the property owner is accurately, you know, getting that information to tenants, we would require that they provide evidence of that. We also want to know the current, you know, tenants on site and their information so we can verify those things. They could either submit that with their application, but I think much more likely this would end up being a requirement through the development agreement that this obligation is met.
Councilwoman Lopez Travis?
Thank you. You mentioned the housing replacement fund. I wanted to know, you know, is that a replenishing fund? Is that helping commit to these actions? I'm really excited by this. I think these are necessary protections, but, but are trying to understand the funding mechanism behind it. I know you mentioned that the onus and responsibility of payback is to the applicant. But that, that was something I was curious about.
Yeah, there, so there is a difference. So the tenant relocation assistance, like the twelve hundred dollars in moving expenses, that's on the property owner's side. But the payment to the city for the replacement units, that, that fee, that would be on the city's side to manage. And I'm not completely sure how that fee would work and how that fund would work. And I think that's a question that we need to, you know, discuss and look into, like, you know, exactly how that would be spent and where it would go.
Yeah, I mean, just a comment for us to think about, and immediately where my inquiry comes from is there's been a lot of units and depletion, specifically, I think of an example on two hundred South and eight hundred East in our community, it is central where four homes were brought to us earlier last year, or in twenty twenty-two. And the city had the opportunity upzone. Luckily, we were able to protect those properties. But once again, those property owners are seeking to upzone, or there's, there's hearsay of that. So I think out of transparency, I'd love to see what, you know, what benefit does this fund create potentially for this neighborhood? If we had to upzone these properties, so just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mano.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. So if I'm understanding correctly, there's really, if I, if I'm a property owner asking for either a general plan amendment or a rezone, then there's three things I need to comply with at the time that that rezone or plan amendment is granted. And that would be community, community benefit policy, the tenant relocation, and the housing replacement. And the second two are, I'm assuming if housing exists. If housing doesn't exist, there would be no tenant relocation or housing replacement.
Correct.
But for any kind of reason, so let's say this one that we just looked at in District Six, they would have to choose one of these seven things, housing, open space, local businesses, one or more of those to say, here's what we're providing in, not in payment for or anything like that, but like to qualify for consideration for a rezone. We're proposing these community benefits. And then on the three homes, assuming that those are rented out right now, they would have to pay up to seventy-two hundred dollars per unit to relocate those tenants. And then also replace at least three units or pay, or do a payment to a fund that could help create units somewhere else. Is that?
Yeah, so they.
My, really broad terms, is, am I understanding correctly?
You've got it. So the real first part, the relocation assistance, it's seventy-two hundred dollars to cover the difference in rent plus twelve hundred dollars to help them move, so closer to ten, ten thousand dollars per unit. And then no matter what, they do have to replace those three units. So say they're building twenty, three of those twenty, they would consider that replacement. And they either need to limit the rent on those units to three percent per, you know, for twenty years, or they would have to do that payment to the city.
And then the tenant relocation money goes directly to those tenants. So I guess my concern is, this is all good, and I, like, I like the direction of it. But my concern is that we get somebody just like, before asking for it, the rezone going in and, A, increasing their rent dramatically, because we have no rent control in the state. So just increasing their rent dramatically, and then a year later coming in and saying, well, my rent is really high already, so I don't have to pay any difference in rent, and I'm going to replace these units at this really high rent. Assuming they can get that, which they may be able to. Or just displacing their tenants a year before they ask for the thing and saying, these are vacant houses. How do we?
Yeah, and we've had the same, you know, conversations and concern, and there, I'll see if I can find the exact language. There is language in here that allows us to look back five years. And if a property owner has purposely evicted or ended a lease for the purposes of avoiding these obligations, then we could look into that. But it, that is a consideration, and we've, we've tried to address that through the language in here. Let me see if I can find it.
And that would just be on, we'd have to figure out how to prove that that happened within the last five years.
Well, and that's why we require them to submit at least three years of data. The idea behind that is so that somebody couldn't game the process. And then there, there are ways that we can try to find out tenancy and length of that through various data sources, but it's going to require some research. The idea is that if somebody goes through and does that, then that would be reasons to say no to their proposal.
I guess, I mean, what, what about the situation where somebody, like, say there is a home that is for sale and, or a property, somebody buys it and wants to develop it, but actually just bought it, so they don't have three years of, of history? How do, we would just say no to them, like, wait for three years and come back? Or how do, how do they qualify to develop that parcel? Because what I don't want is a bunch of dilapidated old properties sitting there being underutilized or vacant until they have three years of proof that it was vacant.
So, so we purposely don't dictate what data, like, the data source that they provide us to accommodate for that, because they can use information provided by the tenants if they want. If they don't have that, if they've been there.
Nick said, though, that most of these developers that are going forward have done this before, and they will be able to collect that rental data with their due diligence. And like, hopefully, they do that part, but.
Okay. Yeah, I think there's also the reality that some, there will be some proposals that on their face are community benefits. Right? And we don't want to shut the door on that. So for, you know, an obvious example is, say, somebody, even this last proposal that you saw in front of you. You know, if somebody came in to open, in, in what was those four homes, a, you know, a medical provider that provided mental health services, that's increasing the access to mental health in the city, which is a need. That in and of itself may be a community benefit, not require anything in, in addition to it.
Councilwoman Young?
Yeah, so just to follow up with Councilmember Mano, I do appreciate you looking at the, the code through the lens of not incentivizing the vacant buildings. Just because I know anytime new code comes into play, that's kind of the first, like, okay, so like, what could I do to potentially, like, skirt, you know, some of these requirements and pieces like that? So just appreciate that as, as a lens. My other quick question was just in relationship to any of the, the code related to any of the city RDA properties and efforts. So how do those pieces interact?
So this does apply to city-owned property where the city is looking at rezoning or changing the plan for individual pieces. We, we would be treated no different than any other property owner. So we, ideally, through the RDA, there would be a community benefit included in that, right? It's a different situation if we're doing a comprehensive change. So if, if, for example, you know, acting as the RDA board, you, you have all seen the proposed changes to Station Center, for example, that asked for more height. If, if we go in and rezone, change the zoning regulations in that, on those blocks to allow more height, that would be more of a comprehensive approach where you can balance out whether or not you need to have a community benefit or not. If we are rezoning an entire corridor, it would be impossible to come up with a community benefit that the city could provide to itself or, or to, to the community. And so the idea behind those types of changes is that the change itself is leading to that benefit. So if we're rezoning a corridor, it's either providing more space for housing, more space for business, et cetera.
Councilwoman Puyi?
That's super helpful. Thank you.
Just a little more explanation on the, of benefits, on the, on the benefits, you know, since those six that are listed in there. The preservation of critical lands, just to pick a few, expansion of public infrastructure. Are those meant to be on-site, or they could be someplace else? Are, I guess the word that I, I just came up with, I don't know if this is a real word, and I make those all the time. But swapability, can we swap some of these public benefits to a different area nearby? It is, can they provide these other benefits not in the, in the site? Is that allowed by this ordinance?
So it doesn't specifically say that it has to be on-site, but the intent is that this is to benefit and, you know, relieve that impact of this development on the immediate neighborhood. However, it does allow discretion that if there is some, you know, really significant benefit they could propose off-site, that that could be looked into.
Okay, so that would allow for some of that. Okay, interesting. Okay.
Thank you. I have some questions. So on the benefits, I don't think that housing is a benefit. It's proven that people want to build housing here. I think the housing should have to prove that it fits into some sort of deficit, whether that be family size or that workforce housing or deeply affordable. Like, I don't want to limit it just to affordable housing. We know we have a gap from the eighty to one-twenty-five range. But I just don't think we need two hundred percent affordability, even though maybe financing on that is easier for a developer, and it technically would be housing. So I'd like, I'd like more clarity on that term that distinguishes that the housing has to meet our community needs, not a balance sheet.
If I remember the wording in the proposal correctly, it says that it, it does tie it to a housing need. So it isn't just we're providing a hundred additional one-bedroom apartments.
Awesome. And then the other thing is, we always consider sustainability as a community benefit, and I don't see it listed here. Is that, is there a reason why it's not listed as benefit, or are we just? Are we building, it's already being built in, you know, fast forward anymore?
I think there, there is, because a lot of sustainability, I'm trying to word this right. But for example, like LEED-certified buildings and things like that, they don't really align well with the land use approval process. Because some of those, you can't actually get that certification until after the building's completed. And once that happens, there's no going back for the city.
Okay.
And so it, it's just a lot harder for us to evaluate that. That doesn't mean that there aren't some things that are sustainability in nature. And I think we've included some of those, like preserving the sensitive lands and things like that. But ideally, our code would be set up so that all development has some sustainability benefits, whether it's growth near transit or growth in business districts, things like that.
And under public infrastructure, I would like specifically to see walkability as the infrastructure and, and those sorts of things. And then on the tenant relocation, the tenant will get to choose, right? What I would hate to see is a landlord says, I've got a unit over here, and they are moved a disproportionate air, you know, distance away from work or from kids or from family members. And they have to take that, or they get no assistance moving. Like, it should be a menu that's determined by what works best for the tenant who's being displaced. Is that?
Yeah, that's the intent, that the tenant would choose where they're relocated.
And then are we to understand in this presentation, rental rate and AMI are the same? We don't usually use the term rental rate. Was it meant to be synonymous with AMI, or is there another way we're calculating it in this instance?
So do you mean the, the calculation to come of that payment, the rental rate by?
I was thinking more of the preservation when we say that they can, they would have to offer it at the same rental rate and same size with a three percent escalator over twenty years, that area? Let me see.
I, if my memory serves me, which, yeah, we'll see. But the AMI, I, I think we avoided using AMI because it adjusts with, like, the yearly income and inflation, right? And so we backed away from using AMI and just went to rental rate, so that it would be more applicable and.
Are we standing on firm, I know AMI is something that like HUD does, so like, it's so not controversial, like, we're on really firm ground. Are, are we on firm ground with this concept? Or is this going to require us to define a lot of things? Or is this going to require us to define a lot of things and create algorithms of our own?
I don't recall any angst from the attorney's office with rental rate.
All right, those are all my questions. Anyone else? Good. All right. Thank you, planning staff. You have completely killed it today. All right. We're going to let economic development come up now instead, and we're going to hear about the Economic Development Loan Fund for Eats LLC. I see Roberta and the trader Brian Pantel coming up. And Allison gets to keep her seat.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I now have signed into my computer so I can do a proper introduction. This is and this is an Economic Development Loan Fund Loan to Eat LLC, which is a vegan bakery specializing in donuts, sweet rolls and cookies. The EDLF loan committee recommended the council approve a $100,000 loan at 7.75 fixed rate interest over seven years. The loan will assist in the creation of three new jobs in the next year and retention of two existing jobs. And the equipment owned by the business would be used as collateral for the loan, including a food truck slash trailer to be purchased with loan proceeds. So I will turn it over to you all.
Thanks, Allison. Great to see you all. I'm Roberta Reckelt with Economic Development. Allison mentioned we have a loan from Eats Bakery. I just want to mention a few things about Eats. This is a woman minority veteran owned business. We've been working with them for about a year and a half now, slowly pulling them away from where they were operating down south. Because they've been surviving basically off of farmers markets and in various markets. You guys have probably seen them. They're they're a staple at the downtown farmer's market. And there's been a huge demand for their product. And so as great business owners, they've been very conservative about their approach and next steps. And so we're working with them and potentially moving them into a brick and mortar, but they wanted to first see what what would happen if they did a food trailer. So that would be able to open up their business line substantially more than what they're doing now, just at the markets without the sort of overhead costs that like a brick and mortar might afford. However, that is their long term goal to have to be fully established here in Salt Lake. Oh, if you have any questions, just let us know.
Thank you, Roberta. Counsel, any questions, comments, concerns? We're very easy to please. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your support for all our local businesses.
It was good to see you. All right, counsel, this means seven, we get seven extra minutes for my favorite topic and yours, which is budget amendment three. Ben Leakey. Ben Leakey, if you'd like to come up for council staff. And then, of course, we'll take Mary Beth, Lisa and Greg from our budget office.
Me too. Just a reminder, last week, the council took a straw poll supporting, and it was a unanimous straw poll, supporting item A1. This was a proposal for four civilian paramedics in the fire department. On the formal meeting agenda tonight, there is a potential vote for remaining items in budget amendment number three. If there is an item you do not want to vote on, or you want to vote on separately, let me know so I can update the motion sheet for tonight. Right after the budget amendment vote, there is a resolution listed, which is related to item A1. It is a request for social workers and civilian paramedics to be added to the tier two firefighter retirement system. So two separate votes, two items next to each other on the formal meeting agenda tonight.
Thank you, Ben.
Before I dive into the remaining items, we do have an update for you on fund balance and revenues through the end of last fiscal year. And I'll turn it over to finance for the update. The council members, you did request this as context for considering the rest of the items in the budget amendment. So that's why we're doing this first.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm going to start and then we're going to kind of go all the way down the line. So you don't have to listen to me the whole entire time. Next slide, please. So in fiscal year 2023, we dropped forty one point eight six million dollars from revenues to the fund balance. Majority of this is sales tax and interest. As you can see on this slide, I wanted to point out that there was a large spike in May and June. So note that May and June revenues don't come in until July or August. So we would have not known that that spike was going to occur primarily for sales tax is where that's coming from. Does that make sense? Okay. And then next slide, please. This is the slide that just shows you where we have received more revenues at twenty six million for sales tax and additional nine million for interest income. Yeah. So I'm going to turn it over to Greg and he's going to talk through expenditures.
Yeah, thanks, Mary Beth. So while we were looking at revenues, we'd also wanted to provide a quick update on our expenditures from last year as well. So the slide here. Yes, thank you. So this is a quick summary of our expenditures from fiscal year 23. So as you can see, the chart here basically depicts a thirty million dollar balance below our budget for the year on the expenditure side. The next slide focuses on our personnel services. So this is primarily our expenditure expenditures around our staff and our people, if you will. So for this category alone, we did see about fifteen point seven million dollars of expenses below budget for the year. And on the next slide, you can see here the fiscal year 23 vacancy savings by department. So what this does, these totals here accumulate to the fifteen point seven million that I mentioned prior and are broken out by department. So you can see this is the balance that returned to fund balance strictly looking at the personnel services category. With the big balances here seen in the police department, public services, and then some smaller values across the departments as well.
So it's one time savings. There is nothing structurally different in the fund balance and the expenses to which we've committed ourselves. It's just that we didn't hire the person or they're not available.
Yeah, I think that this proves the point of our difficulty in the city of hiring for for fiscal year 2023.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Young and then Mono.
Just a quick question. Back to the earlier one on personnel. I'm just wondering if those projections include the new FTEs that councils approved related to the legislative director and supporting staff?
No, this is only fiscal year 2023. So this is as of June thirtieth.
Okay.
Not going forward.
Thank you.
The fifteen point seven is part of the thirty that you said it's not in addition to.
Yeah, and I think the next slide might help a little bit. So this is all, this is the total of the thirty million broken down by our major category, if you will. So you can see that fifteen million there for personnel services, about nine point seven million for our charges and services. And then some of the smaller balances in our other major categories or our ledger levels, if you will. We did have a carry forward encumbrance of twenty one million dollars accounted for, where basically we brought brought funding from fiscal year 23 into fiscal year 24 to account for some obligation expenditures we had already entered into a contract with or committed the city to. So that is the overall table here presents the thirty million by by major category.
So to repeat, none of this changes our expected ongoing revenues. It is one time cost savings. And it's one time that we get this.
Madam Chair, but these are monies that we budgeted. So we we budgeted, we budgeted for this cost to be ongoing. If at least the ones on personal services, or at least the great majority of them. So we budgeted them to be ongoing, but it happens to.
But as we as we budget in the future, those things still have to be accounted for. It's not that there's thirty more million in our general fund to be expected next year so that we can grow by thirty million.
I mean, obviously, when we budget, we hope to fill those vacancies, right? So and and there is something to say about why we're not filling those vacancies and, you know, are we, you know, at the top of the market and whatnot, but those are conversations that we should have soon.
So next slide, please. So this is our fund balance and what Councilmember Petros said was correct. We dropped about seventy two million dollars in one time funding to fund balance to take our fund balance to thirty eight point zero five percent in 2023. That means that our fund balance currently is thirty two point three three percent. This includes budget amendment number three.
What is the point at which we're in violation? Is it twenty five percent?
Thirty five.
Thirty five.
And this will come up in the audit when we do the audit on February in February. This is a compliance that we were out of compliance.
Anyone else? Any questions, concerns, prayer requests on this? Always exciting to have a little bit of a savings account. Were you going to say something?
I just have the next slide, so whenever you're ready, I'll move on.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Dugan.
So this is one time funding. But you can you can spread this over multiple years. So yes, it's one time funding, but if you have forty million dollars, you don't need to spend it in this next year. You could appropriate it over a a longer period of time. So it could end up being a long term funding if you had some deferred maintenance that you needed to pay cost out or spend or some additional expenses that you needed, but you didn't need forty million upfront. I'm using this forty million as a makeup number here, but you could spend it over five years or ten years to cover those costs for that timeframe.
Or we could have a really great rainy day fund so that we don't have to lay people off the next time we have a recession or
Understood.
governmental structure that doesn't like our priorities or things like that.
Understood. Yes, there's a discussion we need to have. But having too much money in your fund balance is not also healthy for the city.
There's other places that we can put it to, right? Like CIP, we can.
That's why I was just saying, when I use it, when I use the term deferred maintenance, we have a lot of deferred maintenance out there that are expensive that we don't have enough money right now. But if you could use some of this funding over the five years, you could actually pay for all that deferred maintenance because it takes you. Again, I'm just using five years as an example. It takes you five years to complete all that deferred maintenance. So and and a fund balance of thirty three percent is not healthy. Fund balance of fifteen percent is very healthy and, you know, or fifty to sixty percent is very healthy, not thirty three percent. We're not using our money wisely.
Correct. Should we let them move on? All right.
So that's the good news from last year. But if we move into the current year, the projections are here. It does look like we are running under budget on revenues so far for the first few months of the year. The biggest portion of that is sales tax. The sales tax is coming in lower than we expected. It's lower than the trend that we experienced last year. We right sized our budget to account for that trend, but you know, it's just not happening like we expected. The other portion of that that we're still sitting on is our interest. We've left it flat at this point because we just don't know what the economy is going to on a holdout while we watch those indicators. But I did bring Andrew Reed, our sales tax expert, to kind of give you an update about which sectors of the tax market are affected right now.
You can go to the next slide. All right, so this slide is just kind of some background information. So so sales tax, as you all know, you know, we're all charged by basic goods at the supermarket or or retail. So sales, Salt Lake City is basically one point seven five percent of the seven point seven five percent that's charged at the sale. So so for instance, if you were to buy a good for a hundred dollars, you're going to pay a sales tax of seven point seven five dollars. Salt Lake City's portion of that seven point seven five would be one dollar and seventy five cents comes back to Salt Lake City. We don't get that full one dollar for the one percent back. We'll get about seventy five percent of that, and that's due to the fifty fifty split distribution throughout the different cities throughout the state. So that's kind of just the background on where sales tax comes from. The local general fund is one percent. Funding our future is the half percent. And that goes towards or that that's funds for funding our future. And then there's the county option, which is earmarked for on transportation purposes. So go to the next slide, please. So this is just an estimate on kind of what what we're currently showing as our projection for actual our sales tax actuals. And you can kind of see that our actuals year over year are coming in right about flat. But we're definitely being really wary about this projection right now, partly due because we don't know December or November sales from from Christmas sales yet. So we're kind of waiting until we really see the effects from the Christmas sales before we start really putting in a projection there. So you can go to the next one. This is a breakout by major sector for the city. So coming out of last fiscal year, so many industries enjoyed healthy growth, such as retail accommodations of food. But this momentum has slowed greatly into fiscal year 24. The accommodations, food and retail, you can see are still flat or positive through the first quarter. And what I'm showing you is just year over change of July through October sales. So we're leaving out the rest of comparing, we're just comparing apples to apples. The months that we've already seen compared to the months that happened last year. So but unfortunately, the sectors that are more interest rate sensitive seem to be taking a bigger hit this year. So looking at the table, you can kind of see sales tax revenue from accommodations and food are doing well, but not so much for wholesale trade, manufacturing, construction and information.
What is information? I'm sorry, Madam Chair. What is information?
It's like tech company type stuff. So marketing and software design type of sales. So some takeaways, you know, that we've kind of gathered so far, which we're still looking deeply into the economic indicators for this, but seems to be there's a lack of business expansion. So count of, so we've noticed that there's been a count of business accounts that are down in all of these major sectors. And business license revenue is starting to it's increasing year over year since two thousand twenty. But it's not back to the same levels as it was as it was in the pre pandemic times. Also, with lack of business expansion, we've seen a slowdown in building and a drop in, so that will just kind of force the drop in construction, manufacturing, wholesale trade. And this is just due to high costs of building and higher interest rates. This information from the lack of business expansion and the slowdown in building construction is really consistent with the data that we see with business licensing and building permit trends as well. So and that's kind of backing that. The last point too that I wanted to make is so we've we've noticed too that seems like there's a slowdown in discretionary spending. So not seems like the consumer seems to be keeping up, but business to business types of sales have slowed down and it seems like kind of to the negative. have slowed down and it seems like kind of to the negative. So, um, some kind of some positive, uh, points to take away from this is with a very tight, tight labor force, um, the highest labor force and we've seen on average since two thousand fifteen. So, you know, with, with this tighter, uh, working environment, it seems that businesses are resistant to, um, shed their employees and they're more willing to increase wages right now. Also, it seems like the state, so, um, the governor report just came out this last week. They expect to see, um, statewide GDP growth to keep continuing. And also inflation is trending down, even though, um, it still seems to be, uh, pretty high. So negative points are, um, you know, while, uh, many economic relationships, you know, it kind of seems like, like this, uh, business licensing and building permits, you know, are, it's still kind of unknown where they are, um, pre pandemic levels. So, um, yeah, that's kind of it. So I think that's all we have for the slides.
Can, thank you, Councilwoman Young.
So yeah, I would say our vacancy, um, report that we just got supports the fact that people are trying to hold on to their employees. Um, I do have a quick question since we have you here. Um, in the fact that the state may be taking action, um, with constitutional amendment to remove their portion of the food tax, does that impact the city's?
No, that, that's the state portion.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmembers, any other questions before we turn the reins back over? All right. Anything else from you all? That's it. All right. So I'm like deep breathing in a couple of ways, both in relief and in deep responsibility right now. Councilmember, please.
When do we know about the, uh, Christmas numbers? Uh, when do we get that information?
The majority, so the filers come in throughout, um, about two months after the sales were made, um, regularly. So not all businesses, um, exactly two months, it might be three months or they might pay one month earlier. But we see majority of, um, payers pay about exactly two months. So we'll have a pretty good idea of how November's coming in. Actually, in the next, um, week, we get the data about the twentieth of every month.
Just a, a note from the, the larger picture. This is a great example of the greater volatility in sales tax revenues compared to the city's other major funding sources. Greater than expected revenue in May and June, and now three million dollars less than expected so far this fiscal year. Sales taxes more volatile than, uh, property taxes or licenses or fees, the other major revenue the city sees. Should I go to the individual items?
I would appreciate that, counsel. Anyone else have any other preference for how to move through this? Ben, you're always such a good shepherd of us cats, so.
So I'm gonna jump around a little bit since the council did already adopt urgent items back in December. But we're starting on A two. This is a A two. Alpha two. It's a request for fourteen thousand dollars from American Rescue Plan Act funds that were budgeted but not used in previous fiscal years. The fourteen thousand dollars is for a grant management employee in the Economic Development Department. There were two positions hired to manage the Economic Development Department's grant assistance programs. These were grants to businesses and nonprofits serving local businesses. One of the employees has left. The other employee, uh, is still needed to finish managing the program. It's taken longer than originally expected to implement the grants. The additional fourteen thousand dollars is to pay for that position through the end of the current fiscal year.
Ben, am I allowed to ask my perennial question? Why is this coming to us in a budget amendment? Why is it emergent?
Uh, I defer to the administration. I, I think the hope when the annual budget was put together was that the program would be implemented faster than it actually was.
But wouldn't that lend credence to why it should have been included in the last budget instead of coming to us in an amendment?
So we expected this, um, grant to be completed as of December. Was not completed as of December and because they only have one FTE, this fourteen thousand dollars will take that FTE to the end of June for those grants to be completed through the end of June.
Continuation, it's not a starting a new position.
Correct.
Thank you.
Moving on to A five. This is a request for three point three million dollars of transportation impact fees as additional funding to the twenty one hundred South Reconstruction Project through the Sugar House Business District. It's from seven hundred east to thirteen hundred east. The additional funds would maximize the eligible use of impact fees for the project. The total cost for the project has increased. This is due both to inflation and supply chain issues, but also feedback and requests from the community to have more traffic calming elements in the reconstruction. The timeline is to complete designs later this winter and then construction could begin later this year. That's why it's in a budget amendment so that construction can begin in the spring instead of waiting for the summer. There's a table in the staff report if you want to see the breakout of all the different funding sources, including the additional three point three million. It would be over eighteen million for the project. The project website is twenty one hundred south slc.org. And I got an update, uh, after the staff report was published. There's a proposal to add a condition to this item to keep a left hand turn from Douglas Street onto twenty one hundred south. And this is from Councilmember Young, who's done additional outreach to the residents who live on this block as well as adjacent blocks. Most of the left hand turns along the corridor are proposed to be removed as part of this project. The majority of the residents, uh, that Councilmember Young spoke to expressed support for keeping this left hand turn on to, from Douglas Street. The Transportation Division reports that this design change would not require additional funding. They also shared that crash data shows the other left hand turns on twenty one hundred south have a higher number of crashes. And those left hand turns would be removed. I don't recognize that sound. If a majority, if a majority of the council supported this condition, it would be added to the motion sheet for a vote tonight. I don't know if Councilmember Young would like to add anything.
Thank you. Um, I want to just quickly say thank you to all of the experts from our Transportation Department, who have gone above and beyond in terms of listening to feedback from the community, making changes, relationships, related to business needs, et cetera. This one particular intersection is at the very far end of the project. Um, and to quote the majority of the neighbors we chatted with, if they can get into their neighborhood, they want to be able to get out. And so I would, uh, propose a straw poll, um, to see if other council members would be interested in supporting this as part of the budget amendment three.
All right. How are we feeling about this, everyone? Councilmember Young, I think you are the first person I've seen use a budget amendment to shape traffic patterns. Like, just way to go. I think that's amazing.
Why? Thank you, Chair Petro.
Remarkable. All right. Sounds like we have consensus on that, Ben, if we want to move on.
Next is A six, and this is very similar to the item we just discussed. It is three point two million dollars in transportation impact fees as additional funding to the six hundred north and seven hundred north Reconstruction Project. That one is from Redwood Road to eight hundred west. This would almost maximize the eligible use of transportation impact fees. It's actually eligible for an additional four hundred thousand, but the balance of available transportation impact fees isn't enough to cover that four hundred thousand. So between the last item and this item, you would be fully using the transportation impact fees that the city currently has. Transportation impact fees come in, you know, every day as building permits are issued. So there will be additional revenue coming to the city. You might see a request, uh, in the future for that four hundred thousand dollars eligible to use those future transportation impact fees, but we just don't have the money right now to add it. The additional funds are to cover cost increases for some of the same reasons as the previous Sugar House Project. A reminder that the twenty twenty two sales tax revenue bond included almost ten million dollars for this project. And the council had also added almost two million dollars from funding our future transit funds because there is a frequent every fifteen minutes bus route that runs along six hundred, seven hundred north. The timeline is completion of the designs, uh, this spring and construction is expected to begin next year. The project website is six hundred north slc.org. Moving on to A seven, a request for four hundred thousand dollars from General Fund Balance for security access control upgrades. This is one time funding. It is upgrading the backend software. This same upgrade was done at the Public Safety Building and here in City Hall. This four hundred thousand dollars is to do it at the Justice Court and Plaza three forty nine. It also includes funding for card readers and the smart badges, sometimes called proximity cards, that you scan and use as a key. Uh, this could be discussed in a closed session since it relates to security. Next is A eight, a request for twenty thousand dollars from General Fund Balance. This is so that the Compliance Division can purchase two electric trucks. They currently have funding to purchase two electric sedans. The trucks are preferred because they are better able to operate in the winter as well as in neighborhoods with steeper terrain. And they have larger cargo space for equipment. The two trucks are to be used by the RV and Long Term Parking Enforcement Team. These are the three FTEs that were added in the last annual budget.
So this twenty thousand just represents the cost difference from what we had budgeted for a sedan to truck.
Correct. From a electric sedan to electric trucks. That takes us to A nine, a request for two hundred thousand dollars from General Fund Balance for multimodal specialized road markings maintenance. You might remember this from CIP in the summer. The council did not fund this item in CIP. It was previously funded in CIP for a couple of years. The administration is suggesting that this be an ongoing item. So in the next annual budget, there'd be two hundred thousand dollars put into the base budget for the Streets Division in the Public Services Department. The, the council suggested the administration to come back in a budget amendment because this kind of base ongoing maintenance, especially for safety purposes, better belongs in some instances in the ongoing department budgets. So it's not subject to that competitive, uncertain CIP process. The types of amenities that would be maintained include, there's over a thousand bike racks, uh, over three miles of green painted pavement. Uh, this is when bikes share the road, uh, with vehicles. There are several miles of enhanced bike lanes, enhanced crosswalks and the radar feedback signs. The departments, uh, said that they'll continue to evaluate the cost of equipment and staffing to bring this in house. Currently, we do not have the equipment to do this kind of specialized maintenance, so the funds go to contractors.
Madam Chair, um, I just, I do remember having this discussion during CIP and I still feel that it's something that we should be funding every year. Maintenance of the, we should buy the things that we need for our community to thrive, but we need to actually maintain those. And I don't think that we should have that in the same competitive, um, allocation process as new projects or new, new capital improvement. So I support, um, both doing this for the fiscal year twenty four budget, but also signaling that we want to see this in the fiscal year twenty five budget and ongoing that, that those things continue to be maintained.
Thank you. I also, as a West Side resident, would love for us to not just have bike racks, but the newer technologies that actually allow us to dock our bikes and that are, make them more difficult to steal. Because I have yet to find the lock that can't be cut through and I'm on my ninth stolen bike. If that doesn't demonstrate my commitment to not being car dependent, I don't know what does.
I'll keep going to A ten. This is a request for a hundred and thirty six thousand dollars from General Fund Balance for downtown parking pay station replacements. The, the Blue Tower parking pay stations in the downtown, they're over a decade old and they are past the recommended useful life. This is resulting in increasing maintenance costs and operational issues. The reason this is in a budget amendment is because of challenges around contracting and order and delivery windows. We've been seeing a lot of this on the capital improvement side and a lot with vehicles. The same is true with the parking towers. The hundred and thirty six thousand dollars is an initial half year payment. A seven year payment schedule is being proposed. So after this hundred and thirty six thousand dollars in the fiscal year twenty five to fiscal year twenty thirty budgets, each year would need a full year payment for a total of seven years. The city used the same seven year approach the last time the parking towers were replaced. A shorter.
Madam Chair, sorry, um, a quick question on this. Um, I, um, I, I was able to travel a little bit and I, um, I seen all sorts of different technology being used for parking management across this country and in other countries. And I, um, I wonder, uh, if we are going to keep on patching on this system. And I know this was a very controversial system back in the day and there was a lot, lot of, uh, discussions about these machines and whatnot. Uh, I know that that was a step forward. I would like more information about this as far as like how many, uh, of the users are using the online version versus how many are actually using the pay kiosks. Because I've been in cities now where there is no pay, there are no kiosks, uh, or there are fewer. And they're relying on people, uh, using their apps more, which it was in a, you know, mean, uh, less investment on those kiosks, uh, and improve on technology and on signage on, on this. So I, I, I'm, I'm interested in seeing more breakdown on, on, um, the usage. I'm sure that we can find some of this, uh, and see if there is a trend, uh, of more people downloading the app as is, uh, explained on those, uh, things next to the parking, uh, spot. So maybe we can cut on some of this or maybe use the money and newer technologies.
But to consolidate, like we, when we went to NLC, we saw the signs that function as a historical marker and as a local map and as a directory to get you to emergency services if you need it. And also you could pay your parking through that as well. So maybe there's a more multi-functional thing that enhances the downtown experience in particular that we should invest in.
Yeah, the, the, you're, you're talking about those screens.
Yeah, the touchscreen one, yeah.
The new towers are expected to have some new features. I don't think these are guaranteed, uh, but the, the ones that were in the transmittal is paying by license plate, having public service information such as events in the area, allowing businesses to sponsor parking validations, paying a parking citation at the kiosk, providing information in more languages and pollution sensors.
Those are great. I will love, you know, a lot of information on this.
Yeah.
Okay. So we
Councilmember, do you want to not approve this until you, is your proposal to not approve this one until we get that information? Or approve it with an intention in the new budget to evaluate this closer?
I mean, I, I, I will hate to, uh, I, I mean, not knowing that information, uh, just, uh, you know, that I just found out. I mean, I, I, I will hate to, I mean, knowing that information just, you know, that I just found out about, you know, potential technologies, although they are not required, but potentially, maybe, maybe they're not required. I would like to know a little more if before I support, personally, I support this. I want us to be looking at new technologies and seems like the administration seems to be looking that way. But before I support this, I prefer to know.
Should we straw poll where the rest of us are if this is something we want to separate out until we get more information? Do you want to propose a straw poll for that?
Sure, I, I will, I would like us to separate this one from the approval process and pending more information. Now that, you know, the information, you know, that is provided to us is a deal breaker. I just want to know a little more before we allocate the money.
So vote in the affirmative withholds this from approval in order to gather more information. All right, so show us how you feel about that. Oh, we're unanimous. Look at us. We are so easy to please today. I'm proud of us, guys.
We can make it complicated if you want to.
Councilmember, I, I thank you for this because like I definitely, my mind didn't even go there. That's, I think this is a good amendment. All right, Ben, back to you. Ben, can we do maybe like four more minutes? Because if we do that, we will stay on time.
Can do. A eleven, this is a reappropriation for a rail spur removal. The council originally approved two hundred and five thousand dollars in budget amendment number one last fiscal year. The funds weren't used, so they lapsed to fund balance. That's why they need to be reappropriated this fiscal year. The rail spur is at six hundred west, five hundred south. It was conveyed by the city in nineteen ninety seven. It has not been used for over a year and contractually the city is obligated to remove it. There were previously a few of these in budget amendments. The administration stated this is believed to be the last.
A twelve, why would something that we appropriated to C I P last year have already lapsed to fund balance? I thought there was like a five year, what, I'm missing something.
So the appropriation last fiscal year stayed in the general fund, which is why it lapsed.
But it really is a C I P project in terms of how long it takes to get done.
Yeah, to, to prevent this happening again, this item would also transfer it to C I P, so it does not lapse.
Good, great, thanks.
Follow up with that, with a question on this, is this related to, so we're required to, will you repeat that? We're required to, to remove this rail spur?
Yep, the, the city is contractually obligated to remove it after, I believe it was two years of non-use and that happened over a year ago.
And who, this requirement, who is imposing this requirement? Who is the contract with?
I, I don't know off the top of my head and I'd want to check with the attorney's office on what to share publicly, but we can certainly get you additional details.
I mean, just wondering if this is part of the, some of the, the goals on relating to the Green Loop. And, and, you know, just, I want to see if that connects in that way at all with those projects.
I, I don't think so because this is six hundred west and the, the Green Loop on the west side is five hundred west. So this would be a block further.
Thank you.
Ben, we got time for one more, I think. We can, we can.
The next one is A twelve, it's half a million dollars from unused ARPA funds, budgeted in previous fiscal years but not used. The half million dollars is for police officer overtime related to the sanctioned campground pilot program. These would be voluntary shifts, so not all of them would go filled. The rate for overtime is sixty five dollars an hour as an incentive for the shifts to be filled. The department stated they would also utilize vacancy savings to fund additional overtime shifts as needed. The council separately has put one and a half million dollars into a holding account for potential expenses related to the temporary sanctioned campground. That one and a half million in the holding account is separate from this half million dollars of ARPA.
Quick, quick question on this, I guess. The, if I remember right, the RFP from the state to the provider was to include it some questions related to providing security onsite and I want to know how that, you know, are we, do we really need this as a question, I guess? And since the RFP from the state, you know, asked the provider to, to come up with a plan for security. And I've been driving through the area quite a bit. And, you know, it seemed, it seemed as maybe even so more peaceful than it, than it was before. So I, I'm, I wonder about what is dictating the need for, for this? Maybe there is some data that says that we need it and great to, to know that. And, you know, what are we going to do that is not, the whole idea behind this site is that it's a temporary in nature and it's also, there is no infrastructure. So where is the officer going to be? Is it going to be, you know, a vehicle involved? Are you going to be just sitting there? I mean, I, I would like to know a little more on this.
Okay. So wrecking.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I, I was just going to say for the vote tonight, since we're not going to go through the remaining items, items that have not been discussed won't be on the motion sheet for a vote as well as the items like the parking pay station replacements that the council requested more information on.
Counsel, are you okay with that? Are you okay giving more time to budget amendment three? We'll leave it open. I'm more going to leave it open anyway for the parking thing, so.
Just one question. Think, and on this one, we said we're looking for five hundred thousand, but we also have one point five in the holding count. Can that one point five pay for this or can we reduce to one point five by five hundred? I mean, the.
I would say the ARPA has a deadline to use it and spend it, whereas the one and a half million is general fund. So it's the most flexible dollars does not.
So use the ARPA for this and then we can use the one point five. If we don't need it, we can just, it goes back to the fund balance.
That's, yeah, okay.
Mary Beth or administration, are there any other things that are urgent that we should give attention to that you're waiting for? Or are we good to continue?
Sorry, I think the consulting for the enterprise billing system is one that I'm concerned about. I know that, so this is public utilities. We really need to get started on that new billing system. The system is homegrown and it's old. And then the other one that, we already did the mill and overlay, right?
Yep, that one was adopted.
And then the grant F T E is probably another one. Either tell me if I have to work another forty hours of overtime or not.
A thirteen and A fourteen?
Yes, please.
And the council did discuss the grant F T E previously. I was, I think that one was going to be on for a vote tonight.
Does any council member need further discussion on item A thirteen, which is the Grant Analyst in the Finance Department? All right, and then A fourteen, do you want to give us a brief overview since it's our first time interacting with it?
So this is actually really similar to the rail spur where it's a reappropriation. It was previously budgeted over a year ago. It was not used, lapsed to fund balance, and so this is reappropriating it. The, I guess the, the pressing timeline is Microsoft has said that they will no longer support this legacy software system later this year. So the consultant will look at what the options are to replace it. But there is that concern of it's not just going to be outdated, it's not going to get security updates. And so it creates a cybersecurity risk.
Perfect. Yes, Councilmember Mono.
I'm sorry, I support. A fourteen, I was hoping we could touch on A sixteen.
A sixteen, let's go. Yeah, I was a little.
I'm just.
We already approved this, didn't we?
Is this already approved or is this an additional request above what we already approved?
That was approved on December twelfth.
Okay, yeah. And that they're not saying they need another amount for that or?
There's not another request at this.
I got it, thanks.
Did we already do A fifteen too?
Yep, that was voted on.
So this means that we're done discussing budget amendment three, save for the parking towers.
The only other item is council added I one, which is related to releasing funds for physical security improvements to this building. It can be discussed during a closed session. The holding account had a million dollars. The request is for two hundred and ninety thousand to release the funds.
Counsel, any questions? You can also talk about it during closed session. I'm fine releasing funds. Okay. I think we like did it.
Those are all the items.
Way to go, team. All right, thank you all so much. This leads us to our next item, which is an informational update for the State of Utah Fraud Risk Assessment for twenty twenty three. So Mary Beth gets to stay here with us. All right, Mary Beth, the floor is yours.
I tried to get away and Ben told me I couldn't leave. So every year with the audit, we go through a fraud risk assessment with the State of Utah. And then we have to present this to council. Shouldn't be very difficult to go through this. It's just going through and asking certain questions and whether we, we as a city have certain things like, do we have a policy on conflict of interest procurement policies? A report for fraud, waste and abuse, travel policies. And our score was three hundred and seventy five out of three hundred and ninety. So we have a very low risk of fraud in Salt Lake City. Any questions?
Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Hey, team, we've made it to our break with, we're just two minutes over. So let's give ourselves the full twenty minutes. I'll see you back at four twenty seven. Sixteen twenty seven for you retired military. We will start again with the next issue, which is a library budget amendment number one for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. Ben Ludeke is maintaining his position at the table. We've got Mary Beth Thompson, Debbie Erin, Erman, Noah Basket and Tyler Bear, Barr, sorry. Is it Bear or Barr? Dang it. So close, but so far away. All right, the time is yours.
This is the first briefing for the library budget amendment number one. The public hearing is scheduled for February sixth. Debbie is away, but I do want to turn the time over to Noah and Tyler since they're new faces in front of the council.
Well, thanks to the council for having us. Your city, your city library leadership is really happy to be here and grateful for the conversation to discuss this budget amendment number one. I wanted to take just a few minutes to introduce myself to you all as your, your new Salt Lake City Public Library Executive Director. After twenty years from being away from Salt Lake, I'm grateful for this opportunity to come back to serve my hometown of Salt Lake and to further the mission and legacy of this hundred and twenty five year institution in building a platform of equity, connection and limitless possibilities for our city. In my twenty years away from Salt Lake, I've had the opportunity to nurture collaboration on behalf of underserved and marginalized communities and cities throughout the world, from everywhere from Delhi, India to Dallas, Texas. And I'm excited to bring that experience back to bear on my hometown of Salt Lake and its city's libraries. I also had the chance to see four of you sworn into office a few weeks back, even before I started my job. And I wanted to thank you all for your service and love of the city. There were a few of Mayor Mendenhall's remarks that stuck out to me in particular as they relate to libraries' role in our city. She said, quote, "This is a moment that demands boldness, creativity, and most of all, it demands partnership." "Your city library is poised to meet this moment in Salt Lake with creativity and boldness and to be a nurturer of collaboration, an engine of innovation and human connection that's deeply embedded in neighborhoods throughout our city." Likewise, as I think you all agree, what Mayor Mendenhall said about professional sports is equally true about our citywide network of libraries. She said, "They're about connecting. They create common ground and shared experiences. They send ripples into communities that can lift up our restaurants, bars, shops, galleries and much, much more." Even though I'm barely awake, celebrating my first week as the city library's new executive, I can tell you with certainty that our libraries really are cornerstones of connection for our city. They create foundations for families, provide spaces for teens to connect after school. They bridge the digital divide, help new businesses get off the ground and create opportunities to practice sustainability. On top of all of this, last year, the Salt Lake City Public Library saved library users over forty five million dollars. So with that, again, I want to thank you all for your ongoing support of the city's libraries. I've asked Tyler Barr, our Director of Finance, to provide a short summary of our library budget amendment number one for fiscal year twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Noah. Members of the council, pleasure to be with you today. Appreciate this opportunity to speak with you. As you may know, after the, the library's budget was initially proposed for fiscal year twenty four, additional property tax revenue of three hundred ninety three thousand dollars was identified and included in the approved budget, increasing the general fund balance so that a budget amendment could be considered at a later date. The approved budget also included a three percent wage increase for staff, which was implemented back in August. So the amendment before you includes three purposes. An additional wage increase of one percent for all employees at a base cost of one hundred twelve thousand eight hundred dollars plus salary related benefits of twenty four thousand eight hundred forty. An increase for medical insurance, which was originally estimated at seven percent in the approved budget, but ultimately came in at fourteen point nine percent for that renewal. And finally, one additional position for the library's safety team at an estimated annual cost of forty two thousand nine hundred dollars plus benefits. So this proposed amendment will enhance the library's ability to retain and attract qualified staff and compassionately prevent and address, respond to safety incidents. So we appreciate your consideration of, of this amendment, this proposed amendment. And we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Pui?
Madam Chair, quickly, a little more background on the new safety. The, so this is a, the, these are, this person will join in on a team of safety personnel that the libraries have. And in the transmittal talks about, or, or maybe it is the staff report talks about an increase on criminal activity and misbehavior incidents. And, you know, I would like to know a little more about this. Just not, in general, not obviously against this. I want to make sure the libraries are safe and, you know, if there is a place that everybody should feel safe. But I, I want to understand a little bit, a little bit what is, how do you define misbehave? How this is defined? I mean, even here in this building, we subcontract some of this to, you know, security personnel and that work, that works around the clock and this building and another facility. So I'm, I'm interested to know a little more about what is this trend that you're seeing? This unfortunate trend and how do you define this incidence? And, and, and second part, I guess, to this question, it is a little more about what is it that we need the security personnel versus contracting that out? And if there is any cost savings on this or, or maybe there is actually benefits that you can elaborate or why this personnel needs to be employees of the city versus contracting that out. I, again, I just want to understand and not stating any policy position at the moment. I just want to understand what this is in general. So I hope that was clear enough.
Great question. Thank you, Councilman. And we do have a number of staff here with us as well, including Dave Corrington here in the, in the tent coat, who is our safety manager. But to respond to your question there, violent incidents have increased over the last few years. And this includes. And this includes credible threats of violence, verbal and, and physical, as well as some physical alterations. Unfortunately, it does not appear that this is an isolated trend and a need that is ongoing to make sure that, that all patrons and all members of the community are safe in the library. The, the model that the, the library has followed and as we're building up is focused on compassion and prevention. Some of the statistics that we've run in the last year, our social services coordinator identified that seventy percent of these, these incidents that resulted in suspensions could have possibly been prevented with social service intervention. So we have in the past contracted with a firm for security. And we've found that in, in addition to just responding to incidences in a reactive sense, we're, we're seeing tremendous benefits from partnering with, with social services and safety together to enhance the experience.
And are there locations, specific locations? I'm sure that you track this, this incidence by location, so by different facilities? And so that's interesting to me. I mean, it's unfortunate that we're seeing some of that and that we need some of this security. But I obviously support the idea of, you know, more safety in our libraries. And I'm just a little curious about what these trends are, because they might mean that we need more in the future, right? And, and that's something that I'm interested in learning a little more. Thank you.
I'm curious why we have a cost of living increase. I understand medical premiums being unable to be anticipated, but a COLA adjustment seems pretty set in stone. And we're not seeing it anywhere else throughout the city indicating something wonky happened here. So why are we being asked for COLA in the middle of the year?
The, as you may know, the, the library is almost exclusively dependent on property taxes as source of revenue. Unlike other city departments, there were, there's, there are other sources there that go into that. So the practice has been over the last few years, identifying conservatively what the budget can afford. And then if there are additional funds available, I'm allocating that through a budget amendment later on. But we would certainly agree with you as, as much as we possibly can. Getting any anticipated personnel costs in the budget upfront is, is an ideal practice.
I'd like us to spend some time ensuring that we don't have mid-year COLA increases and figuring out how to avoid this in the future.
I think this is related to policy question number three in the staff report. There wasn't a contingency with the library's last recommended annual budget, since you, you estimate how much new growth property tax revenue you hope comes in. And then the judgment levy, and we don't find those out until June eighth. It's always that June surprise in the budget process. But if there was a contingency that came with the budget, that would give an option for the council to know what to do if there's more or less revenue than anticipated. We didn't have that this last go around, so the additional revenue that did come in went to the library's fund balance, because that's kind of the default option. And that's the revenue that's proposed to be used to pay for these two items before you.
I know you all have kind of been in a ad hoc, putting it together with interim leadership. So Mr. Basket, if there's any resources you needed in preparation for the budget year so that these sorts of things can be foreseen, I would really be interested in investing in those resources to make sure you're successful.
Thank you, councilmember. Really appreciate that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I, sorry if I missed this, but does, does the library have a thirty-five percent cap like cities' fund balance does, does not? So this money could, this, this amount that was over the annual budgets anticipated revenues could just be kept in library fund balance until next fiscal year?
Okay.
Thanks.
Yes, Councilmember Young.
I just had one other question related to the FTE component. So I noted that you're going to be piloting the mobile patrol model. I'm just curious what type of outcome measures you're looking to use to determine the success of that effort.
Great question. If I could ask Dave to, to join us up here. Currently, the, the mobile function is, is handled by one position. And the idea here is that we'd be able to split into two different positions and cover the city with quicker response times as needed. So as far as outcomes, certainly reduced incidents, I think, is one, but I'll let Dave speak to that.
So just some context on your question as well before, when we were contract security, before we brought everything in-house. You know, there was a lot of challenges, I think, with that, a lot of issues in terms of, you know, de-escalation and, and not having a lot of control over some of the in-house stuff they were trying to do. So I was brought in, been here for about three years. We have created a in-house security operations center, a dispatch that manages and monitors all of our radio traffic, monitors all of our video. Currently, we've got about a hundred and sixty video cameras throughout all eight branches in the main library. The mobile patrol, one of the big gaps that I found was at our branches. And they are kind of like these isolated islands out there, and they do get a lot of problematic issues. We get violence, we see drug use, prostitution, a lot of aggression that occurs out there. So the idea behind the mobile patrol, currently, the model is, is that we have one mobile patrol vehicle. The mobile patrol goes from branch to branch. We've also incorporated a citywide radio system, so we're able to contact them to respond much quicker than before we were having to leave the main library. So phase two of that is really bringing in a second mobile patrol that's going to be able to do one on four branches and then a second on the other four branches. So we have, we have more visibility and capability of a security, safety presence and then a quicker response time to deal with some of the challenges that we're seeing out there right now.
Great. I would be interested in just how that additional FTE ultimately impacts, you know, the ability to, whether it is incidents that they're able to engage in, additional supports, just to kind of understand, I think, to councilmember Puy's point. I'm sure there's certain branches that may see, you know, more of those incidents than others and just how we can target those specific resources it, once it's through pilot period.
Yeah, so having that extra FTE is basically going to give us that additional resource to be able to have what I would consider a lot better coverage of the city library branches, as well as we kind of have a hybrid approach where some of our mobile patrols are also cross-trained to be dispatchers. And so having that capability to have the full coverage of the dispatch. Some of the programs that we've implemented are trying to be a lot more proactive. So we've implemented halo sensors in our public restrooms. They alert us if there's vaping, if somebody's lying on the ground, if they're screaming. And then, so having that FTE will allow us, you know, to be able to really just, we're just seeing, I think you, you probably shared some of the statistics. I don't know if you saw that, but last year we were, you know, right around four hundred and, I believe, ten incidents. This year, you know, we're way up to six something. And we're seeing a lot of violence. We're seeing an increase in drug use. You know, we're seeing an increase in mental illness, which then can trickle out to some of the behaviors. And that's what's been so critical for us in partnering with our social services in-house is that we're able to utilize some of that. So really, it's just, we are stretched a little thin right now. And I was concerned about the safety of my own team and making sure that we have the proper backing and the resources to make sure that we stay safe as well. So hopefully that answers that question.
It does. So I've, I've just seen, sometimes there is a desire to say, have an equitable distribution, you know, in terms of, well, these four branches get one person and these four get another. The model I've seen is specific to school resource officers. And that although I think it's very well intended, if the schools you're assigned or elementary schools that, you know, very rarely see kind of high, high violent incidents, you're like, well, is that resource really going to the greatest need? Where you then have other schools whose, you know, single person is being split and they're not able to address the issues at hand. So I just appreciate the attention to where's the need? And even if that need means, okay, well, one person is assigned to five branches, but another unit is only assigned to these three to be able to make sure that there's somebody available to support the staff. That's what I'm interested in.
Got it. Yes. And we do have that, for example, Glendale, the after-school, they can see up to a hundred and fifty kids in their branch. And you can imagine having that. So we were able to deploy, you know, one of these mobile patrols to be there full-time during that three to four hour period during the school year. But then that takes away from some of the others. So having the second component to be able to redeploy, identify where the needs are, that, that's exactly what the strategy and model is.
All right, Councilmember Horton, then Councilmember Puy, and then we need to move on.
All right.
Thank you, Noah. I'm really glad to have you here. And I appreciate everything you said about libraries in your remarks, and I, I agree with you. I think that's all true. But I am concerned about, there's been some issues that came up over the last year with the library and with, with financing. And so I don't, like, the fact, the answer that we didn't budget for a contingency for COLA is concerning to me because that is my understanding that you typically would budget for that. So I don't understand why that, not you. The library didn't do that this time. And then I also wonder why, if this is a budget amendment that's mid-year, why the proposal is for a full year? No, this is for, yeah, for the new associate. Yeah, sorry.
So the, this amendment that you're considering now actually originated a number of months ago prior to Noah and Mike coming on the scene. And so we had anticipated it coming to the council much sooner, not knowing exactly the, the timing of implementation. That's why we included the full year to make sure, of course, that future years are funded sufficiently as well. And did you have a question with regard to the?
Why wasn't that contingency planned for?
Why was it not?
Yeah, for COLA when it typically would be.
I was not involved in the, the development of the budget there. But the information that we have had, indicated that there were, was not anticipation of funds as much as came in through property tax. When the budget was initially proposed about a year ago, then as Ben indicated, waiting until June to find out the, the actual amounts that would come in, there wasn't time, is my understanding, to, to adjust the budget there.
And a contingency is what would have given us the flexibility to be responsible for those numbers. So contingency seems like a pretty standard operating procedure for budgets, especially in organizations our side, especially in municipalities that are dependent upon others. So is there a strategy in place now to make sure that a contingency happens? Or is there additional insight, help, resourcing needed to ensure that we get one this year?
Yeah.
Contingency, contingency is being contemplated. Staff is meeting with, with managers as we speak and prioritizing requests. So out of those priorities, naturally will come contingency that if we get down to five notches on the list, that's where we're at. And then here are the next five, if there's additional funding. So absolutely.
Councilmember Puy?
Oh, I was just, that, I, I know it's hard to answer for these things that happen in the past. I just, and the reason I'm raising these questions is I don't want to, like, seem like I'm, I don't want to be a jerk. But I, because I believe very much in what you said about the importance of libraries, like, how critical it is that we're sure about these budget decisions that are happening because when you have a resource that is so critical, especially to, to residents that, that rely on it, maybe disproportionately more than other residents, you know, if we're making mistakes that result in saplings or library closures or whatever, it, it, it's going to hurt them the most. So I'm not, I, I don't do it to try to be like, answer for things that happen when you weren't here, but to really underscore all of those things that you said.
Yeah, very much appreciate the feedback from council members. And we, we take fiscal stewardship very, very seriously. I don't think Tyler had the chance to mention in his introduction that he did start with the library in November as well and is leading a phenomenal team and phenomenal budgeting process. So feedback received and thank you so much.
Thanks.
And very quickly, I, you know, and I, I want to amplify some of the, the, the comments from Councilmember Horton as far as some of the budgeting issues and, and, you know, want to make sure that that is underscored because they were very frustrating, to say the least, you know, in the past. And, but, but just on that graph of incidents, it was very shocking to see that. That graph was, you know, and it's unfortunate to see that gigantic jump on, on incidents. And I, I, I would like to know more information about this, and I hope that, you know, maybe there is a regular reporting to, to us because the libraries are a key service that we provide. There are also the image of Salt Lake City, the last thing we, I want, and I'm sure that this sentiment is shared, that, that this keeps amplifying, keeps growing and, and maybe there is something else to be done. I just would like some regular reporting on this since it's that shocking and that, that bad, that red, that, you know, all of those columns. But, you know, certainly that violent, you know, issues of safety are growing. So I, I will hope that we can get some regular reporting on, on that.
For sure. Yeah. Thank you for your care and concern, and we can work with the safety team to, to provide that ongoing reporting.
Yeah. And some metrics, right, that you, we can all track, that there are maybe standard in, in the police department that can help us measure with some level of consistency, how you define things, making sure that they match in some way or shape or form with other metrics that the police department can be using to, to understand. So some, some coordination there as far as the metrics, maybe, you know, maybe there to start to, so there is some standard.
Perfect. Thank you. You survived your first firing squad. So thank you.
Oh, you all made it easy. Yeah. Thank you all for having me.
We look forward to having you back soon. Apologies to our Central Wasatch friends. We are going to let our legislative update briefing go just because during the session, our legislative team's schedule is inflexible. So I'd like to welcome up Kate Bradshaw and Angela Price for the first time this session. Look at them. They look well rested now. Remember what this looks like. It'll get less and less every week.
Thank you guys so much for allowing us to have time on the agenda this evening. I'm Angela Price, the Legislative Affairs Director.
And I am Kate Bradshaw, one of your lobby team members.
So we want to just give a high-level summary of some of the bills that we are working on and tracking for the city. First, I want to extend some gratitude to our lobby team. They have already hit the ground running and we've only been in session a few hours here today. And special thanks to Dave Spatafor, who has started his fiftieth legislative session today. So I just want to give, give our gratitude to our lobby team and to Dave Spatafor for all his work over the past fifty years. So a pretty remarkable legacy that he's leaving here in Utah. We have five policy priorities that you guys have established, both as the city council and in conjunction with the mayor. The first, I, I joke that it's probably the first and the like one millionth is homelessness. And so we have several bills that have dropped in the homelessness category. I'll just call out two specifically this evening. The first is HB two ninety-eight, Homeless Services Amendments. And this bill does a whole lot of things. It changes the homeless council structure. It changes proximity requirements. It changes code blue. And then HB two oh seven is the Utah Homeless Council Amendments. Also changes the structure of the homeless council and does some other things. Also changes the structure of the homeless council and does some other things.
We, sorry, what was the change to code blue? Is it changing the, the triggering?
Yes.
To what?
Currently, the standard is asked to be at the temperature requirements for two hours. It would be for four.
Oh, same degree, but longer duration?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So just know that there's a whole suite of bills that will be coming in the homelessness category that tie to the governor's homelessness initiatives that he released with his budget. There's been some mental and behavioral health bills. So we're tracking these really closely. These are new. They just dropped yesterday. So we're working with the mayor's office on analyzing these bills and understanding. I think we almost need a huge matrix of all of the moving pieces and, and what impacts the city. And so know that we're going to be working on building, building that up. Housing is another category for the, for us that we're watching really closely. Just this afternoon, we had HB 306, Residential Housing Amendments, which has a land use preemption for starter homes. Again, this is tied to Governor Cox's Housing Innovation Budget Proposal that he rolled out in mid-December. And this bill basically preempts cities on our ability to allow for starter homes, meaning that any starter home proposal that is eight units to the acre is a permitted use. And it also limits our ability to collect impact fees on those starter homes. So we'll be working closely with that. You've probably heard this proposal in the Utah League of Cities and Towns has been discussing this as well. So this is one of the, what I'm trying to think of the word that Cam uses. Rumblings, rumbling one has been dropped. So we will be watching this closely. The other categories are energy, water, and the environment. And we have several bills there that specifically our public utility team is watching and working on. One is Representative Snyder's bill that we just met on this afternoon and just understanding the impacts that that may have on, on our water supply here and our ability to provide water to our residents. There's been a lot of energy bills that have dropped and we've been watching those closely. A lot of them are just restructuring. But we will continue to poll those bills and understand how they will impact the city along with any sustainability initiatives. Local control was kind of the fourth policy pillar under local control. Obviously, we want to, we're seeing a lot of, what's the, the word I want to use here? We're seeing a lot of bills that could compromise our local control in a whole lot of different areas. So we're flagging all of those, asking our departments to review them, understanding how they really impact the city. And then we'll be bringing those priorities to you. And then the last is transportation. And within transportation, of course, we have active transportation and railroad. And, and so we are still in the I-15 expansion. So we're still waiting for those bills to come. We'll get a big briefing this week on the transportation bills and the initiatives that will be coming during the session. So happy to share that with you guys next week. Anything you want to add on the top five, Kate, before we go into some other bills?
Because you and I are rubbing off on each other, I also want to start with gratitude. And gratitude in particular to Cindy Lou and her amazing team on the new tracking system. It's not new. They, they have refined their tracking system. And the reason why that is critically important is the legislature has more bill file requests by far than they've ever had before. 1,400 bills have been requested so far this year. It is, it is trouncing any other records they've ever set for requests. And they've also, right now, one day.
That's what I want to say. It's terrifying.
Yeah. One day into the session, they have already released 424 numbered bills, which is also a record for any week one, let alone day one. And so the gratitude for the new system, I have already been through sifting the bills that have dropped today. The new system is fantastic. Thank you for dedicating the resources to help the team do that. See, we are going to become one by the end.
We've been joking how we're going to just morph into this entity.
It'll be interesting to see if, if, if I adopt Crystals or if I'm able to move her into Puffy Vest.
Again, the sequential pictures might be really fascinating for you guys.
You're a sitcom waiting to happen.
Yeah.
With, with that, though, I think, you know, the lobby team, obviously, we've hit the ground running because of just the enormous number of bills. Coming meetings already been taking place, sifting has already been taking place, coordination with the League of Cities and Towns and other local governments. There's already a robust crowd up at the state capital.
Great. So we are going to just do kind of a quick hit on a couple of the bills that I know we've been watching closely here in Salt Lake. The first is HB 261, Equal Opportunity Initiatives. And this bill's moving very quickly. It was read in rules today and moved to the House Education Committee. So this will be in committee tomorrow afternoon at 2 o'clock. We are coordinating with other local governments and with the Legislative Subcommittee on Tactics and the impacts that this bill may or may not have to Salt Lake City. So just know that we're watching this closely. We are talking to other cities and understanding the impact and working closely with the departments within the city that, that touch the different components of this bill to understand the breadth and depth of it. Anything else you want to add there?
We recognize this bill in particular has a lot of energy and emotion that surrounds it for obvious reasons. And so we're, we're very aware of that as we're working to make sure that the city's perspective is, is represented. And as we work through ensuring that those important key components continue to be presented up at the state capital.
What are other cities saying about that bill? Like, I know that maybe we, maybe we're the only city that has position that are more, most, more dedicated staff and resources. But what are the other cities saying, even if they don't have dedicated staff or, or whatever?
Yeah, I think the cities, I, I think we're all really analyzing and, and trying to understand the impacts of the bill and how it could, and really how it impacts the work that cities do, right? And so I think that the cities that we've spoken with are still really kind of digging into, how does this impact our hiring or how does this impact training that we do with the city? How does this impact any staff that they may have? And so I think everybody's still kind of doing an analysis to understand how, how widespread the impact is. Obviously, there's the, but you know, as Kate alluded to, just the pieces of the bill that just, you know, don't feel.
Let me ask it a different way. Among like ULCT members, is this a, is this bill highly concerning to many of them? Or is it kind of in the middle? Is it a low concern?
Unfortunately, the bill, the knowledge of the, the, the municipalities would be included in the bill and the numbering of the bill took place after the league's last legislative policy committing last week and before their, their next one. So there hasn't been a formal discussion or vote taken by the league's policy committee. However, as Angela mentioned, we've, we've talked with several cities that, that seem like they would potentially also have offices or programs as Salt Lake City does. And so they are actively evaluating. We have received some of their shared analysis and have, and have shared that feedback as well. I think where it kind of hits for, for the vast majority of cities is the idea of local control, that you're setting up programs and training and offices that are within your purview to do, to serve your constituency. And, you know, different cities may have, you know, different programming needs based on the makeup of their population. And I think where all cities come together is that the state reaching in and directing how you use your resources to best serve your constituents is one of those attacks on a pillar that is important to all cities, which is, which is local control. So that is probably where, where we're finding the, the most common ground. I would say that in our discussions with other cities, you have the most kind of comprehensive program and office. Not surprising, you know, you're the city of the first class, you're the capital city, you're the biggest city. And, and so you're, the offices and programs you have are often much more expansive in all areas than, than what other smaller cities have available.
Obviously, when I read about this bill, you know, very concerned and, and, and I, I wanted to reiterate about, and I know that you know this, but however we can help and amplify the, the issue and how, how relinquishing this, I, I think this is a big deal. I obviously I have a lot of emotions, like I, you know, like you said, there's a lot of emotions on both sides on this issue. But I obviously have concerns about how it affects Salt Lake City and its residents. But, but also, you know, the local, the issue of local control is, is key to this, obviously. And that I am hoping that we can amplify as much as we can because I, you know, it's very much concerning to other municipalities that, you know, and if this is the, this is, this could be the first step on, you know, dictating. And I remember I seen a photo yesterday when, when they opened the session, or it was this morning, I believe it was this morning, with photos of legislators fighting, you know, governmental reach, federal government reach. And I, I, I hope they see the irony on, on, you know, trying to impact, you know, the local control in our municipalities. And, and I, I, I very much concerned about this bill. And I hope, I hope we can amplify any voices and, and reach out to other municipalities if you need, need us to on this issue. I, I feel very strongly about what the precedent of this, what they said, what this sets as a precedent, obviously.
Thank you. Any other thoughts on that one? Nothing like taking the air. It's completely out of there. It's a hard, it's a, it's an unfortunate one. HB 223, Airport Weapon Possession Amendments. This is the, there's several pieces to this bill. And our team is working closely with the sponsor on how this impacts the Salt Lake City Airport. And to know that there'll be more to come there and that we're working closely on, on that bill. HB 13, Infrastructure Financing Districts. This is a bill that has revived this year. Representative Donegan is running it. And it's building off of some two different bills from last session. And again, we're working closely with the league and other partners on potential guardrails to ensure, ensure that the local process is preserved. We've been working on some internal policies to understand how the city know that we're a growing city and how we think about infrastructure investment, how we think about affordable housing development here in the city. And so we've been working on some internal policies there. And then again, working with our partners on guardrails on infrastructure districts. HB 84, School Safety Amendments. This bill would require all schools within Salt Lake. And I want to say we landed at 38. Is it 38 or 40?
I just remember the dollar total of what we thought it would cost.
So almost 40 schools, we'll go with that, would be impacted by this bill. And essentially, it would require a, a safety officer. And there's different categories there to be in all high school, junior highs, middle schools, or I'm sorry, in elementary schools within the city. And so we've been working closely with the police department and our lobby team on this bill. Obviously, we support having a coordinated approach. We want our schools to be safe. We also want to think about budget implications and staffing implications on this bill and how that impacts our police department. And so know that we're working closely on that and want to ensure that our schools have the best possible outcome if there certainly ever was any kind of a threat. With that, that's kind of a summation of the big things that we're watching right now. Kate, do you have anything you want to add?
I, I would just note on the airport bill, I know there had been some question about another bill that was filed during the interim. HB 56 was that bill. And that would have dealt with highway patrol taking over the security operations for the Salt Lake Airport. We have assurances from the sponsor and from the rules chair that that bill won't move. So we are now working on this bill that we feel like has almost all the things in, that we have agreed to, agreed to on that bill and have just a few additional things we're working with on the sponsor. So.
The bill going to be polled?
HB 56 will stay in rules. And that was the, the concerning bill. HB 223 is the bill that contains our kind of agreed upon path. It still needs a few more tweaks. We have a few amendments that we're actually going to be meeting with around later tonight. But we're close.
But would they pull the other bill or are they going to try to run both?
No, they'll, they've agreed, the sponsor has agreed and the rules chair has agreed to hold the other bill in rules and not advance it. So it, it exists. It's a numbered bill. But if it doesn't advance from the rules committee to a committee hearing, then its chances of making it through the session decrease every single day.
I guess then why don't they just pull it, like get rid of it?
The only way to do that is to make a motion to strike its enacting clause. So holding it in rules is an effective way of ensuring that it doesn't advance.
Okay. Any other questions on bills?
We have lots of days to be frustrated and elated by the roller coaster that is the legislative session. So thank you, Angela and Kate, for starting us off. Oh, councilmember Mott.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to ask Kate and Angela if I could maybe afterwards, I, I would be interested in engaging a little more on HB 306, the starter homes bill. And just trying to learn a little bit more about it. And I was, I did have a chance to speak, to hear the sponsor speak about it. And I, my understanding is that that bill is actually different than what the governor has proposed, even though it sounds really similar. So maybe.
It is, it is Representative Ward's take on, on the idea. It is not, it is not, it is not the governor's bill, you know, hey, Representative Ward, will you run this for me, the governor? Bill. That is not that. It is his, it is his take, his own idea on how to, how to solve the problem of affordable housing from his perspective. His, Representative Ward's bill is, he, he has been working closely with the Realtors Association and the Property Rights Coalition. So on the spectrum of ideas on how one would solve this problem, this is, this is the idea that comes from that side of the spectrum versus, for instance, ideas brought forward by the League of Cities and Towns or even, you know, more of a compromised position, the Land Use Task Force. So it sits on kind of one farther end of the spectrum of how, how you might tackle this, this problem.
There's a lot more coming there as well.
Right. I'd love, I'd love to stay updated on the ones that are coming similar to that or in that same vein and just be able to help out where I can.
Councilwoman Young?
You guys started with gratitude, so I just want to end with that. I had the opportunity to attend one of your legislative briefings related to the Salt Lake City priorities. Kudos to you just in terms of presenting that single voice of these key issues, why they're important to our city in a way that felt really accessible and, you know, easy to kind of quickly consume and understand the, the city's work, especially our newest director. I'm just super grateful in how quickly you have stood up. The office and the legislative efforts and the coordination between both of you has been truly impressive to watch. So thank you.
Oh, thank you for that. Appreciate that. We just have two other quick things to flag for you. On the 29th, from six to eight, there will be ice skating with the legislature, which will be really fun. Your families are invited, so please come and.
This is ice skating.
Hands to shine.
Bring your most sparkliest of attire. I know Kate will be in a sparkly leotard because she loves.
We haven't rubbed off that much.
She loves those kinds of things. And then February 14th, we are hosting the Legislative Snack Break. Really excited to wrap the legislature in all of our Salt Lake City love. So with that, you guys know how to reach us. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact us. please don't hesitate to contact us.
So tomorrow is Local Elected Officials Day on the Hill, so we are all invited up. I'll be up there now that I'm not in Chicago, so I hope all of you will come for at least a little bit. Additionally, in an effort not to make our Legislative Subcommittee a gatekeeping entity, or also since we have such a diverse skill set on the council, Angela and Kate have offered essentially an office hour during the legislative session that can function as a small group for any council people who are interested in getting information directly from them and not always filtering through us. Did you set on a time for when-
Friday at three.
Friday at three, and that there's a virtual and in-person option?
I think it will just be virtual.
Just virtual? Okay, so Friday at three, if you particularly, like those of us who are Legislative Subcommittee, please, let's vacate for the other four. If you want to, just make sure that we don't have more than three on that call, so we don't violate any OMA. But thank you both.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, we, we made, we made a virtual opportunity there because there will be committee hearings still going on there, so that way I in particular can jump from committee hearings to joining those briefings. If you are brave enough to brave the parking at the State Capitol, which is extra, extra bad this year, we do have a room reserved for the two of us to do those Zooms from.
Yeah. And if you come up, please let us know. We would love to see warm, smiling faces. Thank you guys so much for the time this evening. You know how to reach us if you have any questions. Know that we will be in touch this evening on some of the things that are moving quickly.
All right. Thank you both. Central Wasatch Commission, thank you for your patience.
Hello, council. Good evening. Um, okay. Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Lindsay Nielsen. I am the Executive Director of the Central Wasatch Commission. I have been here many times before. It's nice to see you all in new faces. Welcome. What the, what the staff of the Central Wasatch Commission does every year with Salt Lake City Council is makes a visit to update you on the activities of the commission over the past year, our accomplishments, what our commissioners, including Mayor Mendenhall, who is the co-chair of the CWC, and the Chair of our Legislative and Land Tenure Committee have been up to. So that's why, that's why I'm here. Thank you for having me. Next slide. Okay, this will be repetitive for those who have heard this presentation before. But for those who have not, the CWC is an interlocal government, governmental entity. And what that means is it is composed of other local governments. We are a consensus-driven organization focused on protecting these mountains, the Central Wasatch in the front and in the back. We, yes, the, the main aim of the CWC is to convene. That's the, that's our main goal. Bring together various interest groups in these mountains to get them not only talking to each other, but coming up, talking to each other and ultimately arriving at better ideas, better solutions for these ideas, or for these mountains. We also exist to ultimately assist the state as the state works to address the transportation and environmental protection issues in these mountains, and we hope to assist in conflict resolution. Next slide. So these are our member jurisdictions. As I mentioned, we're an interlocal governmental, or interlocal government entity composed of Sandy City, Salt Lake City, Summit County, Cottonwood Heights, Brighten Town, Elda Town, Mill Creek, Park City, and we have ex officio members. Those are members who do not vote. Those are Metro Water, UTA, and the Uentawasatch National, or the Uentawasatch Cache Forest. Next slide. So why should, why are our members part of the CWC? Like I mentioned, we are consensus-driven. It's an organization with goals, really, that doesn't, it's an organization that doesn't really exist elsewhere. Instead of focusing on issues in silos, all of our member jurisdictions come together to one, one decision-making table to approach these issues through consensus. And the benefits, the many benefits of being a member of the CWC are, as you see on your screens, consensus-based approach to land protection issues in these mountains, consensus-based approach to transportation issues in these mountains, and then a number of projects that we focus on over the years, including the Visitor Use Study, Short Term Projects Grant Program, our Environmental Dashboard, which is an incredible font of information. If you have not checked it out, I highly recommend. And Regional Stakeholder Involvement. Next slide, please. Okay, as I mentioned, one of the main goals and motivating forces behind the CWC is the power to convene. We do that at the board level with all of our member jurisdictions coming together at the board. We also do that through our Regional Stakeholder Council. Our Stakeholders' Council is a council composed of thirty-five members, thirty-five citizens. It's a citizens advisory council that includes members from various interest groups in these mountains. And the idea behind the Stakeholders' Council is we, the public knows these mountains. If, there is just an incredible amount of expertise, knowledge, and experience in these mountains, and more, more knowledge, more heads at the table thinking over these issues are better at the CWC. So that's why, that's the motivating force behind convening a thirty-five-member Stakeholders' Council. As you can see, we have representation from groups from recreation, environment, interest groups, all the ski resorts in the Cottonwood Canyons, cultural education interests, transportation interests, recreation, and other private citizens. Next slide. New this year, oh, I should say that what happened mid-year, so this time last year, when we, when the CWC came to address Salt Lake City Council, two of us were sitting here. We had co-executive directors. And mid-year, the CWC went through a staffing restructure. It reverted back to a more traditional hierarchical staff structure with a single executive director, myself, a Director of Operations who we hired, and a Community Engagement Coordinator. This time last year, there were two co-executive directors. So that took up a, I'm sure you all know what staffing, the process of staffing is like, it takes a long time. It's a big process. In addition to restructuring our staff, also new this year is a youth council. In the same way that the Stakeholders' Council brings together people to one table to discuss issues in these mountains, the youth council does as well. The youth council right now is for young people ages sixteen to thirty. It's about fifteen people strong right now, and they are enthusiastic, motivated young people. I'm so impressed all the time by them. They've self-selected into three different committees, diversity in the outdoors, the Environmental Dashboard Education Committee, and the Events and Outreach Committee. And if any of you know of any young people who might have interest in joining the youth council, we have rolling applications. We have a little more space on this, on the youth council. So if you have young people in mind who might be interested, you can direct them to the CWC's website or direct them to me, and I can give them more information. Next slide. Okay, as I mentioned in previous slides, we have a Short Term Projects Grant Program. This grant program is designed to disperse funding to community groups or individuals across our study area, which includes the Cottonwood Canyons, Mill Creek Canyon, and Parley's Canyon, the jurisdictions along the Wasatch Front, and the jurisdictions in the Wasatch Back, Park City, Summit County. The projects must focus on the focus areas of the CWC. Those include environmental protection, recreational stewardship, the economic sustainability of these mountains, and transit and transportation in these mountains. These, what you're looking at on your screens are the short-term projects that we funded in 2023. I should say, over the four years, we started this program in 2020, and since 2020, we've dispersed just under $200,000 to short-term projects, helping community groups get their, their projects that need a little bit more monetary support over the finish line, or helping tickets start smaller projects from the very beginning. Yes, so our short-term projects this year, or last year I should say now, in 2023, included things like trail maintenance work through Cottonwood Canyons Foundation, Backcountry Shuttle Program through Wasatch Backcountry Alliance, help relieve the traffic congestion on the weekends in the canyons. Recycle Utah, that is a nonprofit in Park City that, and Recycle Utah hosts Dumpster Days events, which are events that helps to divert toxic waste from the landfill, helping to protect the water sources in these mountains, so on and so forth. This Short Term Projects Grant opens every year. We're getting ready to open the 2024 cycle in March, March fourth, that Monday, the first Monday in March is when it opens every year. So keep that in mind for your constituents. The call for applications for the Short Term Projects Grant stays open for one month, and this year, we have in our budget $100,000 to disperse to short-term projects, to small projects this year. It's more than we've ever had available to disperse. So tell your constituents, okay?
May I interrupt? Maybe just a little more information on this, or when we can amplify. If you have some one-pagers, we can share with, in our newsletters, and maybe share with our community councils. So I will appreciate some information on this.
Certainly, we can share e-kits. We generally always send out a press release, and we, in, in addition to the press release, we share e-kits that are easily shareable, has a link, a graphic, one paragraph, easily shareable. Awesome. Okay, next slide. Okay. Transit and transportation work. The CWC is one of the most important issues in these mountains, transit and transportation. The CWC does a lot of transit and transportation work in these mountains. In 2023, we released the Big Cottonwood Canyon Mobility Action Plan to supplement, basically to assess the needs for transit and any transportation needs in that canyon specifically, in Big Cottonwood Canyon. Okay, that was released in May of 2023. In addition to the BCC map, lots of acronyms in CWC's world, the BCC map. We, for the third year, are operating a program called the Ski Bus Bypass Program. That is a program that has been wildly successful whereby police escort, or police cars ferry the UTA ski bus from the UTA park-and-ride lot on Highland Drive in Sandy, along its route to the park-and-ride lot at the mouth of Little Cottonwood Canyon. Okay, and what that does is that moves traffic out of the route of the ski bus, and it reduces travel time upwards of thirty percent. It has been wildly successful, and over the three years, we've spent nearly $75,000 to run that, to make sure that program runs. And that, that program is a partnership with UTA, of course, and Sandy City. Okay, another, another shuttle program, specifically the shuttle program servicing backcountry and trail users in Park City, the Wasatch Back. Next slide. Yes, the Environmental Dashboard. It is hard, it is hard for me as the Executive Director to pick a favorite project, a favorite pursuit at the CWC, but if I had to, it would be the Environmental Dashboard. If, like I said before, if you have not taken a spin around the Environmental Dashboard, please do. It is an incredible resource for information. If there is anything you want to know about these mountains, you are likely to be able to find that information in a fun and accessible way on the Environmental Dashboard, okay? So you're seeing, what you're seeing here is a screenshot of the homepage of the dashboard, five environmental elements. This was released in 2022. It's not new, but what is new in 2023 is the addition of the human element. Okay, the human element has incorporated the data that was collected through the CWC's Visitor Use Study and has displayed it in a way, like I said, easy to read, fun to use. Okay, check it out. It's great. Next slide. That is it. A speedy, brief presentation. Thank you for your time. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Any questions, councilmembers?
Okay, thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Happy to be able to do this.
Yeah, good to see you. Okay, we'll move on to item number twelve, which is a board appointment. Sheridan Moore due to the Business Advisory Board. Hi. Good, how are you? Come on down.
Hi, I'm on video. Can you hear me?
Okay, sorry, I was confused. I thought you were, you were Sheridan. Okay, we'll take Sheridan first. You hang on. All right, hi.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I have a horrible camera here. I'm here in a hotel room in dark Atlanta. So anyway, it's actually colder here probably than Salt Lake, so consider yourselves lucky.
Yes, well, it's good to see you again.
Yeah, glad to be here.
Yeah, so if you would just tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in serving on the Business Advisory Board.
Absolutely. I think most of you probably see my resume. I'm the owner of Hip and Humble, owner and founder. We've been in business for twenty-five years. We're ninth and ninth. We are also up in Farmington at Station Park, and we have two beautiful locations at the Salt Lake City International Airport. This, let's see, I guess it was in 2022, we expanded, and we are officially a national brand. We have a location in Fort Lauderdale, and this year we'll be opening a location in Louisville as well as Charlotte. So we're really excited about all the growth we're experiencing right now. Another couple of little things, I own properties in the Ninth and Ninth District, so that's a little bit unusual. And I am also a part of a joint venture with a big national company that specializes in travel retail. So that's kind of everything on my resume. Why I want to be part of BAB is I think I just have a really unique perspective. When you kind of look at my resume and all these things I've just told you about, I'm very passionate about economic development. And when I think of what makes economic development happen, it is a beautiful combination of big businesses, small businesses, medium-sized businesses in all sectors working together. And when all of us are working and growing together, we see vibrant, really cool, wonderful neighborhoods. And that's why Ninth and Ninth exists, right? It's this really great neighborhood. People can shop. People want to live there. But I am just passionate about that. I live in Sugar House, and there is nothing more that I want than our downtown financial and tech center to be going, and restaurants to be busy. I want Ninth and Ninth to be busy. I want the granary to be going off, and it is the combination of all of us businesses working together. So anyway, that excites me, and I'm really looking forward to the appointment and working with you.
All right, thank you so much, Sheridan. Uh, yes, start, Councilmember Young.
So Sheridan, I just have to tell you, I am an avid customer of yours at Hip and Humble. Um, and one of the things I appreciate most is the fact that you are um a space that brings in brands that you don't see in a lot of these big box retail stores. Um, and so I'm just incredibly grateful of the fact that you use that store to elevate um brands that aren't necessarily in the mainstream, um but I will buy candles from you for forever. Um, so thank you for that and for your willingness to serve the city.
Oh my gosh, thank you for that wonderful comment. Um, I really, really appreciate it. And we do strive hard to really lift up smaller brands and especially women-owned brands. Um, that is really important to us, especially, you know, coming from myself, I know what that means to other women. So um, thank you for your support. I really, I really appreciate it.
Councilmember Mono. Yeah, hi Sheridan, it's really good to see you.
Hi.
I was really excited to see your name on this and I could go on and on about your store and how much me and my kids love it, but I actually wanted to just make a comment about how um great it's been to work with you as a constituent, as a business constituent of my district um and work through some of the challenges with the construction and things that have been going on. And I uh just am very excited to have you on our, on this board, on this committee uh to help not just your business, but all businesses in the city thrive. And I think that the, your experiences, especially dealing with the construction that's been going on there and the changes along that corridor, um, both the challenges and the opportunities that come along with that will be really valuable on that as we, as we try to um enhance other business nodes within the city. And, and I think that's um a huge value, so thank you so much for being willing to serve on the committee.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's a really wonderful call out and I'd really just like to take a moment to tell you that um when all the Sugar House stuff was announced, so this was probably a year, year and a half ago, and Eleventh East, I had several um businesses um reach out to me and want to go to lunch, want to go get coffee to talk through how I survived and what I did. And it was awesome to, one, be called on because um I cherish not just friendships, but acquaintances with all business owners, but to really be able to mentor them through an extremely difficult time for businesses was um, was a really great experience for me, actually. So um, I appreciate you calling that out and letting me elaborate on that a little bit.
All right, any other comments? All right, great, thank you Sheridan. Uh, we appreciate you being here and we are very excited that you're willing to lend your skills and connections and expertise to our Business Advisory Board. Um, we will place your um appointment on our consent agenda for our formal meeting tonight. Uh, you need not be present to win, but you are welcome.
Is it winning? Is it really?
Uh, yes, you win the opportunity to do a lot of free work.
Yeah, exactly. I'm excited.
It's exciting. You're gonna get you in on the ground floor. You're gonna love it. Um, so yeah, uh you, you don't need to be there, um but you are welcome, of course, to join us at our meeting. Um, but thank you so much for your service to Salt Lake City.
Hey, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Have a great night.
Yep, travel safe.
You too.
Okay, our next, why didn't I do that? Uh, next is a board appointment to the um Business Advisory Board um for Bari Alair. Did I say that right? Oh, great, come on down. Yeah. Oh, no, no, you're okay. I think we confused each other. Um, so, no, my, not your fault. All right, so same question to you. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in serving on the Business Advisory Board? Oh, sorry, you need to speak into the microphone. Yeah, you're gonna need to speak in the microphone. All right, thank you.
I'm gonna have a heart attack in here.
Yeah, I get it.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
As I was saying, have any of you been into our consignment store Found and Kept in West Foothill Shopping District?
What is it?
You have, yay. Hi, and Dan has, thank you.
Sorry, what's the name of it?
It's called Found and Kept. It's a consignment store um in the Foothill Shopping District. So we opened our store, we're going on our third year this April, and I have appointed myself the committee for our neighborhood. And my vision is to make it a people community, so big business, small business, all the businesses. But there's seventeen businesses in our new little row, so we've all gotten together and we're naming our district. We're getting ready to um do like a ribbon cutting, hopefully have a district member come out and do a little cut for us and have it really special. So it's a really great opportunity um just for us to really engage with our community. We're doing really fun events, doing um pop-up shops, supporting local artists. And it's um having the sustainability be a huge part for us at Found and Kept. How can I tell you more? So here, here's the funny thing. My husband and I moved here four years ago from Huntington Beach. So we're just driving, why everyone always asks me that, because we love Salt Lake City. So we're driving around, we're going through Immigration Canyon and I see a for lease sign. I'm like, that would be the coolest spot. I have a garage door, not knowing the neighborhood, not knowing where I'm going. But we go in, sign the lease organically, just make it happen, and then four or five other businesses open like a year later. So now we have Paul Paus is over there, we have a barber shop, another vintage clothing store, every blooming thing is over there. Katie Waltman just opened a huge boutique. So all the neighbors have really been collaborating and getting together because we really want to make it a people shopping experience. I think that neighborhood is really um needing it and thriving and they really want to come out and do fun things.
Thank you, Mari, and I thank you for uh putting your name in the hat for the BAB, so appreciate that. So taking the leadership role in the district and the local businesses, I mean, there's seventeen, and you wouldn't know that there were seventeen, but they're all little small businesses along the twenty-one East, uh just south of thirteen South. Uh, and it's a wonderful little gem, uh and, but Mari's taking the leadership role there and really kind of sparked the place. And so I think that on the BAB will go far, especially generating the interest in other communities. So thank you very much for your involvement with, with BAB.
Yeah, of course. I, I feel like, I feel like it's a missed area, just me being newer to Salt Lake, and you can tell me if I'm on the right track here. Just having Katie Waltman move into that area is huge. She bought that entire building on the side. Her brother owns Creamo right next door. So I feel like it's a missed opportunity and with the help of the city and with our group that's gotten together to, you know, encourage the neighborhood and they're really into it. So I think it would be, like, it could be a ninth and ninth, but maybe going to a different direction by actually doing the registered organized community and going to the city and getting a lot of fun things to happen and keep doing events.
Mr. Chair, I quickly, I, I buy my dog food in the shop right there and I go all the way uh to this area. And, but I also have bought some melons and some fruits from outside the shops, you know, seasonal one. And I, I'm excited to see this area um, you know, flourish in the future. So thank you for what you're doing and taking a leadership role in that community. So thank you.
Oh no, of course. I know we used to have Taggy's fruit out there, but we had a little dust up, not me personally, but there was a lot of, now that new businesses are there, they were using the parking lot, so more things happen, but they might come back.
Okay, great. Any other questions? All right, well, um, as you heard, you uh will be, your name will be placed on the uh consent agenda at tonight's meeting that you don't need to be present, um but you're more than welcome to join us at any of our formal meetings, as is um any member of the public. But thank you so much for your service to Salt Lake City.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for having me.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm going home now.
All right, sounds good. Thanks. Safe travels out there.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, um, next is um an appointment to the Arts Council Board, Travis English. Is Travis here? Yeah.
Yes, I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, sounds good.
Yeah, please tell us a little bit about yourself and uh why you're interested in serving on the Arts Council Board.
All right, yeah, I'm super excited to, to get involved. Um, so my name's Travis English. I live in the McQuell and Yale area, um very close to Ninth and Ninth there. Um, just want to get involved with, with the city. Um, you know, a few years ago, lived in Park City and was involved with their um Arts Council. Um, and I was actually the events director there. So I was very involved with the community in Park City and I recently moved to Salt Lake about a year and a half ago. Um, have always had an interest in, in events and the arts and um just want to get involved with the community here.
Okay, great. Um, thank you. Any questions for Travis? Okay, well, um, I don't know if you heard uh my previous comments, but we will place your appointment um on our consent agenda that uh you do not need to attend the formal meeting, but um you are welcome to if you would like. And thank you so much for your service to Salt Lake City.
All right, hey, thanks guys. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Take care.
Okay, um, our next uh appointment is uh to the Human Rights Commission. And we have Lisa Yacatini. Lysia? Is, nope, okay. We do not have Lysia with us, so um we'll just move on to the next one. Um, which is also an appointment to the Human Rights Commission with Lucia Rodriguez. Do we have Lucia here?
Sorry, we don't have Lucia online.
Oh, well, that's too bad. Okay, well, um, let's see. We're like at the time that they're supposed to be here. Let's see, um, and we don't have anything else. Why don't we go ahead and do um any reports that we have and then we'll circle back and see if they've shown up and then we'll go into our closed session. Do we have any reports? Oh dang it, I'm trying to think of something right now while I'm talking. Um, I got nothing. Okay, well.
One thing you could do is you could take your motion for the closed session, but specify that it will convene after you have grabbed dinner and come back um and done your interviews. Can you do that, Katie?
Well, unless they don't show up.
Right, so.
I would like to, I would like to see a motion um that to go into a closed session at uh six o'clock. Um, and so whether you want to get dinner, go to the bathroom, whatever, before that, that's when we'll convene and I'll just sit here until then, if they come back. Yes.
Um, what is the motion right here? This is the closed session.
Yeah, I'd love to see a closed session motion about strategy, uh strategy to discuss purchase exchange or lease of real property and attorney-client.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I believe that the closed session tonight is to advise, to receive advice of council and to discuss security measures.
Oh, well, that's not what it says here.
Sorry, it changed.
Oh, okay. Then um then I would love to see a motion about uh attorney-client uh privilege and um or attorney-client matters and deployment of security devices.
So moved. No.
No, you have to say it.
Ah, Mr. Chair, I move that we enter into closed session for the purposes of receiving attorney advice of council and to discuss deployment uh or of security devices, measures or personnel.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second, a motion from Councilmember Mono, a second from Councilmember Pui. Um, I have to roll call this because it's closed session. Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Uh, Lopez Chavez?
Yes.
Mono?
Yes.
Pui?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. I'll see everyone at six. Uh, great, and she's, and she's back.
Close session.